Yes ma'am, ready up? Alright, uh, let's reconvene and call this meeting to order. We probably ought to start out with another prayer, but we'll, uh, we'll probably just move past it a little bit. Starting with you Bob, good morning.
Morning.
Good afternoon, good afternoon.
Uh, y'all got a copy of the budget?
Yeah. Do not.
Y'all, his budget is on the long, it's right here, on the second page. Column number 260 is E O six. First column is current budget, second column is request. And third column is the N F S.
What number was it?
Two sixty.
That's a pretty good retirement present. Is that all retirement gift? It says Bob Retirement.
It's a good one.
The, uh, the only thing that's really jumping out, we got some more, we ordered some more, uh, the trucks from Forest, and there's some regulations about keeping them under housing. Try to get some roof line built to put those under. And also, and I don't know, I had to get with Mr. Laurel on that, the, at some point during the year, there's going to be a, we come off of the warranty on Motorola and go back on to the, uh, maintenance group. If y'all choose to go back on the maintenance group, and that's pretty much gonna be that on the E O C side. There's several other things that I wanted to talk to y'all about.
Well, back up a second, I'll provide a cover parking for that fad vehicle we got. Which one is that?
That's gonna be two of the, um, military type trucks that we use during the high water events to get vehicles out. That's what we've been using for, also using for, uh, forest fires, brush fires.
And are these used on a daily basis, or are you using it every once in a while?
Just every once in a while.
Those are the ones we got that, that happens, you know?
Yeah, that'd be a good question. You go, where are you gonna try to build, extend roofline?
At the E O C, where we used to keep our mosquito sprayers, we've got a fenced in area.
Right.
It's already, I don't know if you noticed, when you, when you come in our apartment lot, right across from the sheriff's, uh, area, that, um, green fenced in area? That you really can't see behind it, that area, that's why we just wanna extend that roofline.
Okay.
Under that so we could do this. And also, that, that helps us on the, uh, requirement on the generators. We get generators periodically, I don't think we're gonna get any more generators, cause we've got, every fire department has one now, every, uh, everybody that wanted a generator's got a generator. We keep it a couple there for extra parts, but, once again, we gotta keep those under shit too.
Alright. Feel free to proceed, that's something I got some other questions.
I was just wondering, is there a CFR, or something that addresses if these vehicles need to be?
Yeah, how to keep them, how to house them, how to paint them, you gotta change the paint scheme on them, and you have to, both the vehicles and the generators all come from Forest, and the cost is a hundred dollars on the, for those, you know, it's, you know, really, and I think, and every fire department in the county that's one that's got one, also, a couple of fire departments have two.
They go down to Pocket, they got a whole fleet of them.
Puckett I know has.
Of course Pocket's got one.
No, I mean, they got a whole, they got a great fire department down there.
They do.
Pearl's got one.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
You know, everybody that, and like I said, it's, you know, to your, to your point, you know, it's, it's not something that you use every day, but it's a real handy item.
You need it.
You just hope you don't need it, but when you need it, yeah.
What if I just count, I mean, they sit, like a surplus, and you pay a fee to get them?
Yeah, that's a hundred dollar fee.
Both of them come with like, six hundred miles on them or something.
We were trying to get the, my guy tried to get bulldozer the same way, I was hoping they could go to run through the Florida program too. That was kind of our, our hope, that we could get some of that equipment through there, but it runs through the Florida. But other than that, on, on that, that's the, the only changes on the E O C, I think. You got the nine one one and the, I got one that's stuck on that one.
What's on nine one one? Are you asking for anything there? Well, I'm sorry, I missed something, what are we, moving on?
Oh, that's up to you, up to you guys.
E O C, you don't, that was the E O C request.
Unless y'all have any more questions on me, now, I will say this, and, and it's not actually on the E O C budget, but, we have been contacted by the ambulance service, and they are gonna ask for a three hundred thousand dollars addition.
When is that going to hit?
I think it's, they're wanting to do it this, uh, cycle, but, I mean, I've made several comments to them on the same side, there's no way we can do three hundred thousand. I mean, that's absolutely crazy. Not crazy, but I mean, it's just, it's a lot.
You know, I just want y'all, you know, while we're in the budget side.
Well, they ought to be contacting us, not you.
Well, we, I wanna know, I mean, we asked them, I asked them.
That's when they kept emphasizing on the false calls.
Yeah.
They were, that's when they kept putting, talking about them, how many calls, but how many driver runs.
My exact thing to them was, I think they're gonna start this next week at some point, was, sit down, lead supervisor individually, break it all down.
Yeah.
And show it to you, so.
I think they should come in and break them into groups.
It doesn't matter.
Why would we need to do individual?
I don't know.
I just want to give you guys a heads up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
Other than that, like I said, uh, the one issue on the nine one one side, and this is, I don't know how in depth the sheriff's got on it, we're four dispatchers short right now. And if we don't start finding a way, if, if there's any way possible to try to get those guys pay raised, pay up, where we can try to keep some dispatchers.
How do you, where are we losing these dispatchers to?
Uh, well, Madison County is, I think, two or three dollars more per hour than us, and our municipalities, you know, they can go to a municipality around here and get, you know, a couple dollars more per hour.
We're losing financial cost.
And the problem is, when we get them trained up, you know, they're, you know, like Southwest is free to move back to country, and, you know, if we could, it would help, you know, I say this sheriff and I, I mean, I, I just work on the funding side and on the, on the bank room side, on the, on the radio side, but, you know, I pay for half of the dispatchers, but we, I do know that we're in a bind on the dispatcher side.
Any particular reason, I mean, we're always trying to save money, but, you know, I mean, that's just silly if we're gonna stay at the same, if they're gonna be two or three dollars under everybody else in the, in the, in the area, that's just silly.
Well, I don't think that's always been the case. That hasn't always been the case.
What do they make up of the places?
I would have to run the, and it's, uh, some of it's based on longevity, and some of it's based on just, just a straight start salary. But, I was talking to, um, some of the guys over there the other day, and we were at a meeting, and they were telling me that one of the, they lost one of their guys that had been on there for several years, and they took a job in Madison for two dollars more than I am, what he told me. But I could get all that together for you if you want me to, and find out, but it's, some of it's based on longevity, and some of it's just, uh, start the pay. But, in saying that also, I would be highly surprised, and like I've been warning y'all, during the next gubernatorial term, that they don't do something on the nine one one money and start, uh, calling back and start forcing municipalities back under the jurisdiction of the county. Or they're not gonna get any funding.
Hey, and by one thing, explain to everybody here how that dispatching stuff works. We're still funding these cities' dispatchers. We're funding Pearl's.
The dispatch center.
Centers. Uh, Pearl, Flowood, Brandon, and stuff like that, it's not just, that's money we're passing off to them.
Right, we just bought them.
Now, we, we own all the equipment that's in every, every.
Right, I mean, but when we upgraded our radios, that was part of it.
Yeah.
But, aren't we collecting that, that amount of nine one one money though?
Yeah, it's, on the way, the state won't disperse it, they don't recognize any entity lower than the county. Because that's, that's the lowest dispersment they'll.
What do we dispatch for the city dispatchers?
We don't.
No, no, we provide our infrastructure basically on that.
But, when we upgraded our radio systems, you know, that was part of it.
Cost was in it.
Yeah, but some of them had already updated theirs, I think Flowood and Pearl, I think, hadn't they?
The radio, not the system, the system is all.
The consoles.
Yeah, that's all been ours.
I thought Flowood had already bought theirs.
They did. They, they went and bought their own portable.
I thought they bought console, actually. Oh, that's right, Pearl was waiting to get it. Oh, Richland. That's right. Had they already bought something?
The portable radios and the mobile radios that they put in the vehicle are getting issued to people, that, they own those.
Right, okay.
The system where the dispatchers are, and what they talk on, that is owned by the county, always has been.
Okay, even Richland's?
Yeah, everybody's.
Okay. Well, you know, right, right before we upgraded our system, I think some of them had gone out and started working off the states, right? Already.
Right, yeah.
And they just was not waiting on us.
Yeah, some of them swapped over, you know, to the state, and, uh, they got on the state's hours, and once we got on, we worked out our original state, and we had better coverage, they,
Which that kinda, that kinda, the state kinda did that to us, right? I mean, they shouldn't allow them to do that, we need to have control, I would.
It's kinda one of them unfunded mandates.
Yeah, well, there's, and this is another thing, and, you know, I hope y'all read my letter, one of the reasons I want to give whoever the new guy is in here, there's gonna be a fight for that money, cause I tell you, the state, there's about forty-eight million dollars in the C M R S fund for upgrading, and there's gonna be a fight, and, you know, I'm gonna ask you guys, and, you know, I'm gonna ask for, you know, our portion of it, and, you know, the state finds out, you know, if there's some kind of way that they can, you know, move those people around somewhere else, they're probably gonna do it.
I guess I'm at a loss, what do you mean, the C M R S?
Nine one one funding.
Okay.
The nine one one funding, they, they've said, and some of you guys have heard me, this, this fight's been going on for a while, and the percentage you get on the landlines, and the percentage you get from the cell phones.
Oh, you're trying to get the cell phone kicked up some, because speed workers are not using landlines as much.
There's a pool of around forty million dollars, and, you know, the words, it changes from month to month depending on what entity, you know, accesses the upgrade. But, you know, a portion of that should come back to Rankin County. And then, the question is, whether we get in there and start, you know, fight for hours, or, you know, somebody else is gonna try to, you know, get in there and get that money, I, I tell you, it's kinda.
Is it the money that's generated off nine one one, just the cell phone part of it?
Yeah, yeah.
What, now, I thought last couple of years, you've been trying to get that portion increased, is that correct?
You are correct, sir.
Alright, so, how is the dispersment and all that, all not already set out, guidelines set?
It is set right now, but if the legislature sees that, it's, that money has been pooling over the last twenty years. And right now, the way the state, and those of you who are real familiar with the state vote, they're looking for ways to.
I can promise you, they're gonna get it.
And cut that.
They already got plans, what they gonna do with it.
I wanna make sure that we're upfront, at least get in and start, you know.
Get in there and throw some leaks.
We're legal on getting our, at least the portion that our taxpayers have paid in for Rankin County.
How is it supposed to be broke down?
It's all broke down on percentage, I think sixty-seven cents goes to, uh, comes back to the county on the cell phone charge, as opposed to ninety-eight cents per line on a landline charge. And that was, that was a fight that we've been fighting.
Yeah.
But apparently, they, the legislature sees no reason to change that, um, so they're accumulating those other, uh, funds into the C M R S pool, that's where the forty-something million dollars is accumulated.
I guess I don't understand, why are they accumulating, why aren't they dispersed annually?
I can tell you, they want the pot to build, build up to where they can take it and do something they wanna do with it.
Yeah, and that's why we, you know, that's why I've been trying to fight that fight, and I hope whoever comes in here, I gotta get them.
If they disperse it every year, they don't ever have a chance to get their hands on it.
Well, I mean.
And, uh, like I said, the Motorola maintenance contract's gonna come back around, um.
Is that what the big increase in the service contract line, Ivan, you had in the budget?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's going up, heck, I thought we'd be going down, we just got new equipment.
It's going back to, it's gonna be close to what it was originally four years ago, uh, when we started.
What was that, a hundred and twenty-five?
I think it's, I think it's a little bit more than that, but I, we hadn't worked it out, but that's, once again, that's something that I just wanted you guys to be aware of, you know, whoever the new guy is, we need to sit down and start negotiating with them, and, once again, it's gonna be several meetings with you guys on working out the maintenance contract also, getting that in position. So, several things coming up.
Well, didn't y'all say we're gonna advertise that job soon?
Sir?
Yeah, I've got that on my thing to send to you.
So, we're waiting on crosshairs, have to hold up a whole whole thing, or Evan?
Too busy dealing with them streets tore up castles, I can't get to here with some stuff.
So, the biggest.
Any more questions, or?
The biggest thing out of your budget coming up, increase wise, is for the service contract? Dish personally, I personally have.
That's my anticipation.
Alright, man.
Hey, let me ask you just one thing, Bob, how out of whack are the E O C salaries compared to comparison in counties? Or are they?
In other counties, or our county?
Using our county, using our county to compare to other counties, where do we sit as far as what we pay our E O C people?
Starting pay for E O C director in Forest County is simply seventy-five thousand dollars five years ago.
In Forest County?
In Forest, yes.
Madison just hired one, what did they hire at, do you know?
I have no idea. I have no idea, I know, at one time I had, uh, I thought I included in last year's budget, but I got those figures at my office on last year's budget for it, giving a breakdown.
Where's our overall staff rate, pay wise, to other counties? You're a fire coordinator.
Well, compared to the five biggest counties in the state.
Have we set the cap on fire duty E O C, what we're going to do, we put it on that yet?
Just give it the authority to authorize. I think you got a range, don't you?
What range are you gonna work to?
That's.
About two?
Well, somewhere in there, I mean, you're right to start from the top.
Yeah, true.
I guess y'all got your justay, and I might be, like, a lot of the experience or coming from another county and.
Well, Harrison County's so much bigger than us, too.
Yeah, but you said, but you said Forest County.
Yeah, not a whole lot.
Harrison? It's a bit bigger than us, I'll tell you, close to two hundred thousand?
No, this, this, what is the second highest budget?
No, I'm talking about population.
Oh, population one?
Well, yeah, for the counties, yeah, I think they're bigger.
Oh, the population, I was thinking about budget wise.
Yeah, no, well, their budget.
Their budget's not higher now. DeSoto's, yeah, what is second? DeSoto's the highest.
I don't, I don't know if we'd be second, second budget. So, you starting on your house yet?
We are.
I got the plan.
No.
We hired them. I think we're progressing now.
Uh, number two.
Well, I thought we were two, nobody's asking anything, so, yeah.
Four hundred and forty-six.
Kinda loose there.
Oh, yeah, there, but.
Seventy-three.
I don't think, man. Right, but. I guess everybody's done.
Like I said.
I think, uh, I think Harrison's gonna be, I think Harrison's a big county.
So, you found doing some lobbying after this? I think, I thought they were bigger than us. I don't think, so you hang up your hat?
If it pays, yeah.
Who, who is there to represent the counties in terms of these dollars?
Uh, Mr. Gray, I can't think of his first name.
Oh, with the, Superfire Association?
Yeah, Missy Superfire Association, it's him and one other guy, it's Steve.
Steve Gray.
That's right, and they are on top of things, according to the emails we get.
You've got a E O C directors association that's out there.
Name of the association.
And it's on the same side that the firefighters association's out there.
What about the nine one one, is there a nine one one association?
There's a nine one one commission, uh, obviously it's appointed, I don't know, I mean, it's eleven, twelve, thirteen people, whatever it is, but, there's a commission that regulates all that nine one one money that comes in, so, they're gonna have a, an argument with the legislature on the same side.
That's the C M R S board.
Yeah.
But, right now, Melissa Brown, who works in our nine one one office, is the C M R S board president, so that's why I'm saying now is a really good time for us to get something going.
Get something going, as in, in terms of what?
Requesting for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Requesting that those folks.
Have we not been requesting it though, I mean?
We hadn't put forth a, and this is something the board's gonna have to, I don't have the authority to request the C M R S board, you know, to say, you know, let's come up with a plan and hey, what are we gonna do? You know, cause following the state's guidelines, what they're saying in their peer committee report, I gave you guys a copy of last year, what they're saying in that peer committee report is, you can have a P S A in your county, that's it, we'll fund a P S A. If you wanna fund other P S As, then you pay for them, they're gonna fund one, that's what's coming. And I, I could, I could tell you, it's, it's like that train coming down the track, I can't tell you how fast it's gonna get here, but it, it is on the way, and I don't want you guys to get blindsided.
Oh, what's a P S A?
Public Safety Entry Point.
That, and we have one?
We have one, no, we have five. You've got Richland, Pearl, Flowood, Brandon, and the sheriff's office, and the E O C's back there. So, all those entities are gonna be, well, they're not gonna be debundied, but what they're gonna do is, if you wanna keep paying for them, then you pay for them.
It's where we're almost trying to go back to the cities and say, help.
What is the, I mean, what is the physical, is it just equipment down in nine one one, switches, or what?
The big cost is, the big monthly cost is the lines coming in to each agents, that's where the biggest cost is to A T and T, it's, I think it's.
Six hundred thousand.
Probably about twelve thousand a month for Pearl, eight thousand for Richland, ten thousand for Brandon, some, somewhere in there, and I, I may be off a few thousand.
Six hundred thousand a year.
It adds up pretty quick.
How did we get to that point, why do they have their own?
Everybody wants their own little kingdom, I mean.
Everybody wants to do their own singing, song and dance, that's the way it always happens.
Yeah, in the past, board.
Unfortunately.
You know, this started way before y'all, you know, allowed it, you know, and it's, it's gone on now, and I mean, and I, I've shown them, I've talked to them, and some municipalities agree, and, you know, there's new municipal leaders in some cities, I haven't talked to all of them, but, you know, I've shown them how, you know, I can save money. But when you're talking to a, when you're talking to an agency, talk to a police chief, and you say, and, you know, this was even when I was Alderman Wade for us, look, man, we could save several hundred thousand dollars a year if we just merged in and started working with the sheriff's office. And they were like, well, but what if I wanted, if they screw up, I wanna be able to get on to them? Well, you can ride ten minutes, I mean, ain't it worth three hundred thousand dollars to save?
Is it, are they paying for it themselves, or are we paying for it?
They're paying for the employees, not for the equipment, not for the cost of the lines.
In the building. Well, you're talking about dispatching, dispatch, dispatch, okay.
Yeah, we're paying for all that.
I got you, okay.
And, you know, their, their incomes are up, you know, they want to do theirs, but I'm, I'm saying co-located, we're not, I'm not advocating hiring a bunch more dispatchers, what I'm saying is, we've got an open seat here, if you wanna hire somebody and put in that seat, because nobody knows the technology, where the, where the phone call's coming from, cause we're already running Simpson County and Scott County through our system. They, I guarantee you, ninety-nine percent of the people in Simpson and Scott County have no idea that it's actually ran through the system in Rankin County. And there's no delay, the technology's there, you can do the same thing here, save a ton of money.
Is there a municipality in Rankin that doesn't have their own?
Florence and Pila Hachi, and both have asked to do it, and I said, I, I told them I wasn't funded, and they wanted to come up here and ask you guys, that's totally up to them.
I got you.
But you're, once again, you're talking about a significant increase on the nine one one side for, you know, on the county side.
Alright, Bob, in your stuff, you talk about an additional spot or position.
Yeah.
You know, expand on that some?
Uh, once again, the, uh, the medical association has got new constraints put on, I talked briefly to you guys about the, the new testing that they're gonna have to do. Every medical facility's now got to do two physical tests where they, per year, where they have a, whether it's fire department, police, water, whoever, but they had to be signed off on by E O C, it's gotta be a validated test, it's gotta be certified, and that's what they're all up in arms about that. And you're talking about a, a lot of man hours and a lot of time to start getting somebody in there to validate just the health facilities in Rankin County. And we partnered up a few weeks ago, I don't know if y'all remember, I told y'all we were having a meeting, and we partnered up with all the municipalities, kinda told them, hey, look, we'll kinda help coordinate it, but still, it's your firemen, your police, your water departments that have to kinda take the lead and have the boots on the ground.
Yeah.
We can still do the checkoffs, and we can get them validated and all that kinda stuff, but if we can tie in two or three facilities at one time, we'd like to do that. But right now, we really don't know how manpower intensive it's gonna be, but, uh, apparently it is a, uh, it is a thorn that keeps reappearing.
This the Department of Health?
The Department of Health has pretty much, uh, slipshucked it off to everybody else, because they had, I forgot how many people they laid off, and they pretty much said, well, I tell you what we'll do, we'll just give it to.
We'll let somebody else do our work.
Push down.
Yeah.
So, it's another, it's another unfunded mandate that the Department of Health has pushed down to all of us. And, you know, and that's every nursing home facility, every healthcare facility that has a bed that does treatment, so psychiatric also.
Alright, so your plan was to bring an additional person online at the E O C, and let that person be the, the new E O C director, to be trained underneath you?
Right.
And then that position would then continue on as the guy does all these checkoffs?
Right.
Was that, was in your budget?
Yeah, yeah, and I would, I would recommend it, it wouldn't hurt, you know, whether you look for a part-time guy or whatever, that would help. Rankin County's kinda unique, because we have so many different volunteer fire departments. We got the largest number of volunteer firemen in the state, and fire departments in, inside the county. And that takes up a lot of time, you know, keeping those guys trained and, and, you know, basically keeping them happy, I mean, you know, you get in the free service, you, you know, you want them to do the right thing, you want them to keep doing it, so you wanna keep them there, but it, there has to be a standard that you're setting also, you know, whether it's training, or, you know, medical training, or fire training, so, you know, that, that, that's a, a lot of doing, plus, you know, y'all know about, you know, getting the rating and changing the ratings, all that takes up a lot of, a lot of man hours, and we got the response team stuff, so it's not, you know, all the time, you know, working eight to five, there's a lot of night work, cause every, every volunteer fire department, their meetings are always at night, you know, in a class, so. It'll look a bit more good than it appears on the surface. And like I said, I hope y'all get a good guy, and, you know, I.
We do too.
I hope that y'all get a guy that, you know, has, you know, if I was making a recommendation, I hope he's got, you know, some strong response, you know, credentials to start with, because that, that would, you know, give you a good base, but it's, it's the politics and the learning, the radio stuff, and the nine one one, and how to go, you know, when, you know, when you're talking to somebody, and the lieutenant governor's mad at this guy over here, you gotta be careful how you're talking to him, because you don't want it to get back and affect, you know, Rankin County, I mean, that's the. Y'all, most of you guys know how that works, I mean, you know, this is, you gotta be careful what you're asking for and who you're talking to a lot of times.
Well.
Alright, anyone else for Bob?
Like I said, y'all got any questions, just, just give me a holler.
Alright. Thanks, Bob.
Bye, guys.
Appreciate it.
Bob, you're running them off, everybody's leaving, Jade left.
Go ahead.
Alright, uh, Ms. Massey's next. Okay.
If y'all will look on the long figure, she's gonna just gave you, you can, in Bob's department here, you see how much the increase was, and if you look at the next column and the next, that's, I took it down, trying to get our budget balanced again.
You took down the seven percent, right?
Yeah, I took out the seven percent, I took out the vehicle that was in there, because he has, um, if you look down a couple lines, two sixty-seven E M A, and, and he most grant, he has about thirty-four in there. He told me that could be spent for equipment, so that could be the vehicle that's in there.
Who's the vehicle for?
Well, see, I guess if he was putting on the additional employee.
Is he putting on additional?
No, that was what he was asking for.
I just thought you said that the additional employee would go over his spot and do that too.
Yeah, but I think, I think what he was, what he was requesting for was to stay, let that guy be him, to train it, and then after Bob left, you would have to hire another one at that point, to fill that spot.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The spot of that training, that's what he was talking about. I don't think it's needed. I mean, I think, I think the issue you could do on that would be turning, if you needed to hire somebody on a part-time contractual basis would be a lot simpler than that, but they've got enough time down there to do that. We're talking about checkoff training, we're not talking about curing cancer.
Yeah, we got Marty down there too, don't we?
Marty's phenomenal.
I'm, uh, after, I mean, the first and second column, I kinda couldn't, well, catch my breath, but then when I saw your column, I'm good.
Yeah. You backed out the raises.
Anybody that wants to make a request from later on in the year, if it's validated, you can come back and y'all can make that decision then, but right now, what I'm trying to do is get the budget. I did put around sixty thousand in there for a new employee. I took Bob's, once that he'll be with us, plus with you, we'll be cutting out those two forty hours, put that in there. So there's sufficient to cover that, and did not put a new employee in there, and did not put the seven percent.
Well, I mean, here's, here's. I mean, and here's my thing, what I wanna do on the same side, I'm gonna call around several of these other groups that I know county-wise and see what they're paying. I, I don't know, I, I know ours is low right now on that side, but I need to look at the other ones to get to, I don't know how low is low. Isn't that a song or something?
A year or two ago when you brought the ones in that you compared the number of years, I just wasn't on that.
Well, the problem is, everybody you're gonna get's not years in service as the E O C Director. It's years in service that they have in the game. So when they bring them in, it's a twenty-year fire guy that's been in for whatever, but, um, I just wanna, I just wanna look at what the other counties are paying, because most of those guys don't stay in, now, some of them stay in those positions a long time, but some of them don't. I think, I think, I think, I think a new E O C Director would give us a good opinion on whether or not we need an additional person there or not. I don't think we do a person. Yeah, the, the sixty, I don't know that.
Have they just now hired somebody over there, to replace Butch?
They hired somebody two months ago over there. I don't know what they brought him in at. Mine are, mine are Norman.
Well, it's been a while. I mean, Butch's been let go over a year ago, wasn't it?
No, uh-uh, it was first of the year.
Was it? Okay.
It took him a couple months. I don't know.
I tried to call him, actually, his, the number I have is disconnected.
But he had a county phone.
Don't you think, I mean?
He just didn't live in Rankin County.
Okay, all right, so never mind then.
Do I think Butch is a good guy? Yes, I do.
I mean, I don't know how, what, as far as experience goes.
He's, he's a good guy. I mean, he really is.
I've only met him a couple times, he seemed like.
I think he's a good guy. I think you're gonna get some good applicants into this deal. I do. All right. Ms. Massey.
Welcome back.
Thank goodness you're back. How's the baby?
Baby's good.
Now we're getting somewhere.
We need you back for Laura run everybody off.
Leave Laura in charge over there for a couple months and it's just sideways, you know? There you go.
She's tough over there. You recognize anybody when you come back?
A few. They were all working out so good though. It's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
Where are they on the white line of here?
The, uh, the second page, uh, second to the top up there, Justice for one sixty-six. If you will notice, the third column that Jessica had requested was not a whole lot, it's your raises and insurance, but if you go over to the fifth column, that's increased even more. Um, and Jessica probably didn't think about, we needed to put in there for Mississippi warrants, that's due in our collections now, you know, so I had to up the budget, and I based it on what they got paid this first time that they got paid.
Well, shouldn't we be coming out ahead on that?
But that will come back in on the collection side.
On the other side, okay.
To the expenses somewhere, and I did, I did up the collection side, but you have to expense it somewhere.
I got you.
What they get paid.
I'm just kidding, I don't need it. I'm just kidding.
So basically, other than that.
So forty-five thousand?
Yeah, that was the increase, and like I said, that's because, I, that's not all the warrants, that's the amazes and the insurance, what I put in there to pay them, which is only an estimate based on first time of payment.
Got you. So where are we on that little deal? Is it working out for us yet, or?
We've only been paying them once. Yeah, they, they got paid once while I was gone, so they sent me an invoice, and I've gotta go through it, because I don't have the fees, so I gotta go through that with you.
Well, wherever we paid them, that means we for sure got in that much.
That we got in.
Yeah. Just don't know how much it is.
She's gotta put it on both sides of the sheet.
I was curious.
And expense it, you can't do a net figure.
Yeah. I was just curious how, what kinda damage they've done for us so far, or is it worth hiring them?
Right now, I think they're just trying to find the correct people, and we don't, a lot have come in, they found a vacancy, so we're having to write off a lot, a, a good portion.
Yeah.
Probably should've done this sooner than later.
Jessica, you live in my district. Yeah, I like this budget. Well, I'm glad to see you, you still exist. All I can hear your name and your voice occasionally.
Twelve weeks is a long time.
Or not long enough, huh?
But that is, that is true. I did not put in there, um, because I didn't quite know how to.
Add it. Laura, just go ahead and add it.
Just go ahead and take it.
File cabinets, I know when we move, we're switching.
Oh, that's a big item there.
We have completely, uh, file cabinets for storage now, so I didn't know if it would, if any other departments had extra cabinets that we could have. I don't really wanna order.
What, you talking, you talking roll tape, file cabinet?
Well, right now, we can choose to use the drawer.
Oh, the drawer, yeah, yeah, right.
Either get some file cabinets or, of the supply line for boxes, to maybe box some old and used stuff.
Till you get moved.
That's if you'll have completely financed.
Because I didn't really wanna spend a lot of money on buying names.
I think we can address that.
Okay, yeah, but that was my only other thing that I just not.
And I didn't know if you still needed or not. I did leave the open slot that you have with a person on the Mississippi side.
I think eventually, right now, we just don't have, we need to put three, cram three in there, and Amber and Tracy are working really good, so if we could just leave it open, don't get rid of it, but don't fill it.
Got me a little shot, you want some? You want grape?
Yeah. Only complaints I overhear is nothing, phone not being answered.
Seventeen years, and it rings nonstop.
Is that on a switchboard, I mean, like a recording thing, or is it recording?
Oh, my gosh. Man, we done went through this.
Oh, we have. I've had a couple we changed it.
Oh, Lord.
I just bought on all earpieces.
Oh, man.
You know, if there are ways for them to answer it, but it's just.
Not work.
Good luck with that, if y'all wanna dive off in there.
It's, it's never, we even, we used to have somebody that just specifically answered the phone, and it just, it didn't work. I don't, I don't know how to fix that.
Yeah, 'cause even if somebody answered their phone, they go to transfer, somebody gotta answer on the other side.
True. Boss math.
I got nothing else here, all right. It's Jessica, I'd love for you to stay, and you're welcome to.
Okay, plenty of work to do.
Glad to have you back.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We'll try to keep Laura out of your office over there. Slasher.
Give me some help here, tell her what nice it is.
Oh, no, she was leaving. She was leaving.
I've had two constables and Rich Wilson come to me about how good it was up there.
It's really good. All the judges, no complaints.
Oh, come on now, no complaint?
No complaints.
Oh, somebody lying to you.
It's probably.
I know one that was gonna complain every day about something. Oh, no.
I would assume Judge Broom's not here right now.
No, they're, they'll be here in a few minutes. So y'all want me in two sixty in the E O C budget, y'all want me to up the amount for the director that we have in there?
I think it'd be great if we could do something for sixty, but I'm, thank you, I think it's.
I think we need to play it by ear.
I, I mean, I think you probably need, I think you need to budget it. Quick and get it for sixty, okay, I'm just saying in the budget side.
Budget it to, to count for.
Well, you know, if we budgeted, it's gonna be there. We don't, then we can amend it later. I'd rather wait to have to amend it than, than, uh, give them all that extra room to spend.
Get, we, that's us, the spending it though.
But you know, just like when the, we approved the last budget, we had them two trucks in there, they went and bought them. Well, now's the time to not put the money in there, 'cause there's money in there, it's gonna be spent.
We're talking about the advertising, uh, money, I mean, money to put in. I mean, see what you're saying, we're talking about the money.
Right.
It's gonna come out either way, I guess you're right, it doesn't matter.
I mean, I'd, I'd much rather amend it later than give it to them and them, you know, oh, we got all this extra here, you know?
It's like, it's like he thinks that we, we can control ourselves, you know what I mean? And that's what you're doing. We're the one who set the salary for the director, I get the rest of it, but we're setting it for, which is fine, whatever, whatever, how do you wanna fool yourself, works for me.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Bob.
Well, I need to.
Dictator, yeah.
How much to put out there as a range when we advertise?
That's true, because we'll, we'll find out when it goes totally silent for about two weeks.
I, I think, I think you're gonna have it kinda like you had the I T side of that deal, where they come in and you're gonna see people that you think are.
Well, there was two come in and they, yeah, they wanted over a hundred, you know, like, they just ignored that number out there altogether.
So, I mean, I, I think you can put the range.
Who can we, who are our pure, who are our true peer counties for this job?
Madison County is, is very compatible. They had a lot of volunteer departments that are in the county. Lauderdale County, very similar. I've got about six that I can call directly and say, hey, tell me where we're at. DeSoto County, same side.
You wanna do that?
DeSoto, you know, they can be a lot higher.
But, I mean, let's just see where they're at. I mean, I'm not saying you go as high as they go, but.
Austria'd have it anyway, she can make those phone calls for you, and it's just tying up your precious time.
I got it. Thanks, buddy.
You just don't know how close she is to being able to leave, man.
I know she can walk out in time.
Don't try to push me out this long.
Oh, man, I knew that was coming. That's why I went ahead and apologized earlier.
Um, if y'all will look, I told y'all bottom line, I still have a little bit to go, it's not much to get it back in balance, but if y'all wanna know some of the cuts that I have done.
Well, that roof thing was wanting to.
Don't cut, put it back in, or whatever you want to do, starting up at the top with y'all. I didn't know what y'all wanted to do, but I took out the lobbying contract.
Yeah, good, good move, good move. Tried to stop them from doing that last time.
If you'll come on down and see Judy's one oh four, hers went up a little bit because she brought to me five employees that are gonna get their certifications this year, and that's two thousand a piece plus fringes, because they've got their next level of training. The next one, um.
We don't have any choice.
Do you know how many she's got certified in her department?
Well, there's three levels of certifications, and I know the first year, they either get a thousand or fifteen hundred, and then the next certification they get two. And each year, she's got about five of them. She wants to get all of hers trained.
Oh, yeah.
All.
I didn't know if we were trying to put some kinda cap on the numbers, or.
We don't have a choice.
Or the state statute.
Yeah, they, they had their lobbyists.
Right, once they get their training.
And she came over here this morning, letting you know she received another notice, that's what she was doing in here.
Another notice of what?
Of all of the yet more training.
What, a fourth level?
I don't know, she said they sent them a notice out, and now all of them have to go back again for another training.
Oh, I, she didn't mention anything to me there, I'll have to get.
I have a question. Craig, does the statute say that all of the employees are eligible to go through this, different training steps? Or does it say if they go through it and pass, we have to give them this extra money?
Yeah, if they, they have to pass.
But.
But I think it's if they go through it. It is not if they are all required to go through all levels.
So what Bob was saying, if we put a cap, we could have a cap of ten or whatever, a reasonable number, and then Judy could pick, pick the ones that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that her pick, she wants to.
Yeah.
All right, I, I'm, I'm gonna sit on the sidelines on this one, y'all tell her that.
Well, I mean, that was speed game. I'm saying a reasonable, I mean, whatever number she has right now, or, or whatever, to where we don't just have everybody over there.
Well, you know, man, that was all a racket to start with. The, I mean, the whole reason they did that, to be able to catch up to the tax assessor's group.
Talking about Judy.
Yeah, the tax collectors, all those little stuff, they just got their lobbyists together and got it done.
It was, because they need to, they wanna be.
I, I think Judy would agree to, I mean, if she said, this is the bar, we, we'll have eight or ten or whatever, but just where we have, we can look and see, uh, how fast we're fixing to start, spending more money, uh, I mean, these raises would be more than anybody else in the county. I mean, which they are getting qualified, but at some point, we may have to put a ceiling on how many.
How does the assessor's office, how does theirs do it? Is it, it only applies to certain positions, right? Like, you can't, the person answering their phone can't necessarily do it. You can, everybody can?
Really?
Okay.
To be able to go to.
Yeah. And so how many out of the assessor's office has done it?
Uh, I think, I think both, all of them have done. I think all of them have taken the two, class two designation, but not all of them have passed the M A E designation.
Okay. Because that actually is some real studying involved, right? I mean, yeah.
I mean, I, I did all of them.
Yeah, so.
Did you pass?
So John sends all of his.
Money.
They're all there. Okay. Of course, I know Judy's got more employees, for sure. Then the collector's side, though, it's not as much money, though, is it, for each step? I mean, I know you add them all together, it's a big number.
Because some of hers get two thousand, and his get a thousand and fifteen hundred, and it's thirty-five, or the M A E. But hers is like a thousand and two thousand, and then two thousand.
Uh-uh. Wow, so five thousand per employee?
What's they get?
Woo!
Holy cow.
Yeah.
What about the chant tree people, is that?
You don't have any, they're working on it, of course, because the tax letter and the sister have, so now those clerks, deputy clerks are complaining because.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, I do understand.
Well, you know what, we probably oughta take that into consideration, you know, hiring new people at the rate they come in at. 'Cause it's gonna be a given, they gonna get that extra five thousand.
Well, they're not gonna get it in one year.
What is the time period on that?
Time frame.
Uh, but you can't do more than one in a year.
How many classes in, in a year can you do?
I think you only do one, and you don't get the raise until the following year after you've passed the class. So these raises going into effect, the girls took their courses this past year, passing them, they go in October.
Of course, how long has this legislation been in place? Three years?
Two, no, it's only been there though for three years.
Yeah, two or three, not anymore than.
I mean, I think you can still have some wording in there saying, we, we would accept those type of raises pending budgetary issues are, are straight. I mean, that happens all the time on the state government side of things, where people go take classes, but you're not guaranteed your money, really.
You're not, but it's a little different here, though.
Why would it be different?
It's different, so, to, it's, it's, well, it's harder to say no to it on the county level than it is in state level.
They pass.
We pay. Because they go, they pass, and that's the reason. Mm-hmm.
The statute is drawn, so that is.
We are here, nowhere.
There's not this level of discretion that y'all are assuming. I, I think we can suggest that the, uh, the number of employees within the department that would be eligible to take the class, that's where I think you probably wanna look to see, because I, I doubt that they addressed that in the course of the statute. There may be some flexibility in there.
Well, I guess so. We are the position right now. We set the budget, and as long as they can come in under the budget and give all those additions.
Yeah, who cares how many it is?
Yeah. So I guess this is our opportunity to establish, you know?
Well.
Laura, I mean, that's the way it's been so far, right? We haven't really gone up on their budgets for salaries, or have we?
Well, that's what some of this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it's included, see, they're getting that on.
Oh, so this is adding on to their budget then, added to the budget. Oh, well, heck with that, man, yeah. Jeez.
Yes, this is in addition to what they get from the county.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we need to set a line, yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking that we need to set a line, yeah. No, 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 I'm just thinking that, you know.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah.
Well, I've taken, I've taken different departments down as comfortably as I could, and what I do is I pull a, um. Sheet that has the last four years of actual budgets on it, and like, if they're requesting twelve thousand in a line item. That they've had in there for four years, and they've spent one thousand out of it, well, they're not getting twelve thousand that next year, because we have that happen a lot. They might have five thousand in a line item. When I send to their budget, they spend a thousand, and then they request twelve. Or it might be, they have five thousand in a line item, they've spent six, and they request three. And it's a reoccurring expense, so I have to then add it in.
We started changing that back twelve years ago, taking some of that out.
I have to bring it up to what is gonna be an actual amount to pay. But I redid a lot of everybody's knowing that they can come to you to look in the ambulance on page two. Line item, it's two forty is the department number. I have put a hundred and fifty in, well, it comes out to a hundred and forty-two, because we have a deduction in here, but I put a hundred and fifty in there. Daniel said he thought maybe that would be a working spot.
How do we get comfortable with their request? And how do we justify that? I mean, they're not regulated by. Public Service Commission, but yet, we've got to take their word for it, they need.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess the only way to really explain it is, they have a dollar amount per truck, basically, what it's cost to put a truck up in service. So, once their daily truck allowance, however many they put in here to answer those calls, to keep it inside that ten minute parameter. Once that exceeds that number, or to add another truck to keep the parameters down, if, if the subsidy doesn't come in. They have to figure out how we're going to staff these trucks. If they can't do, say, it's seven in, in the Rankin County. They bump that down to six. Well, when that, it may happen, your times may go up. That's the game AMR played with us. So, what happened was, when they felt like this number's out of whack, okay, they downsized the amount of trucks. We went from seven in a contract to three maybe here, or two or three. And then they said, well, it's really not working there. What we'll do is, we'll house them all in a three county area, and we'll pull them as we need to, you may get a truck or not. How we got an hour and a half or hour timeframe, cause they were coming from all the places. So, what they're trying to be able to do is justify the ability to keep those trucks dedicated to Rankin County. That number that keeps the timeframe there. So, when they can't make the budget size, they gotta shut a truck down. And I don't know what the number it is that they've got on per truck, but what's happening is, you got all these trucks answering those calls. Cause see, even those, that, that six thousand calls that go in untransported, they still go into your time calculations. So, they still gotta make them inside the number, you know? The one cool thing that they do on their time discrepancies that I wouldn't do if I was Patford, is I would have my exceptions played into those time parameters. They taking zero exceptions. Your runtimes are your runtime, they are what they are, so. That's what, that's what the cost factor comes into play on that same side. So, obviously, so many trucks, with twelve thousand patients transported in the county, you're gonna make X number of dollars. That's gonna pay for five, six, maybe seven trucks. But when you gotta put eight trucks in here. It's just not playing in the game, so that's what the subsidy comes in the, the side of, that's as simple as I could explain it.
Just throw on the table, y'all think about, understanding.
Yeah.
Is, you may wanna look at some things in the contract. So, if you're gonna agree to this subsidy, now may be the time to talk about some other things in the contract.
Alright, besides the whole thing, cause I think that was a one year deal we had, wasn't it?
Yeah, we had it one year out, so.
We, I realize they're not taking any exceptions, but they're in there.
Right.
But, you know.
This may be a good time to just, if they're not gonna take them anyway, we'll just eliminate those.
Well, they told us at the beginning, if they hit this number, that they should be solvent. And to my knowledge, we were there. So, how do they come up now, all of a sudden, we need three hundred thousand, cause that's what we threw out originally?
Cause he kept coming back saying dry runs, and that's what he was trying to tell you.
One was the paid number, uh, the number of runs where they actually had a call that followed all the way through. To carry into ER, versus just the number of runs period.
And I, and I still think that number was a little low. I think that, Daniel's opinion, not Amos's. I think you gotta have thirteen thousand transports to break even for the number of trucks they got. They had around twelve or so transports. They thought they were gonna get thirteen to fourteen thousand on the transport side. Not the total calls, the total calls are around eighteen, okay, so.
I thought the number was twelve. Wasn't it twelve?
I was thinking it was thirteen, my number's thirteen, I think they had to have, they, they got twelve.
Yeah, I thought that they told us twelve up front.
I felt like if we, he's in, they got different managers, Freddie Parker's the guy that's in charge of Mississippi, that's doing all the stuff now. But, um, their, their number on that side, I mean, I, I felt like we were gonna get on a subsidy if we didn't get thirteen thousand. And we're just under, I mean, not much. Do I think, do I think they pull out or something if we don't pay the subsidy? No. But I think our times may move a little bit, you know, I mean, you can only pay what you can pay to staff. That was the reason why AMR came back and said, remember, one contractor bid they sent back to you was. We'll give you six ambulances in the, in the thing for two million.
Yeah, I mean, they weren't even, they weren't even being realistic at all.
But, but this is a realistic issue.
But we do have a realistic company willing to come in here and do it for no subsidy. You know, ASAP.
But you, you do, but your call volume, recall times, as long as you're not worried about them.
I am, but they seem to think they could hit them all, you know?
So did AMR when they came in here and sold you on it, right?
Well, no, they, uh, they never did from the get-go.
Yeah, but they told you when they sold it, they could, didn't they?
Yeah.
If there's, if there's one thing that we can say, I'm for sure, is, is that, uh, it has been nice over the past year.
Yeah.
That was kinda.
I'm not aware of complaints, either from the volunteers or from the constituency about problems.
Or if they have been, they addressed them.
Exactly right.
It's, to me, it's worth, if even a subsidy, not to get called. And wanna know why it took an hour and forty-four minutes to come pick up my.
I don't think three hundred thousand's right, I think that's numbers, that's way off.
Right, I do too.
Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I, I don't know the figure that I'm comfortable with until I talk to them, and they show me where they're losing some money. But I am very comfortable with the services that we've gotten, uh.
You think of the people that's come into this county that's tried to do it for zero subs, Acadian did it, belly up, got out. AMR did it, said, we can't do it, we'll pull the trucks out, your times went up. You've had multiple ambulance companies coming here. Try to make the call times that you requested, well, let me back, that we requested, couldn't do it without the subsidy.
Well, I mean, Acadian was doing it, they chose to leave, you know?
Well, why would you leave if you're making money?
Yeah, cause they didn't get, the reason why they didn't get Madison and Highs like they thought they were.
Losing money.
Right, but we have another company that said they will come here, but the thing gets me is, they sit there and told us that. They wouldn't come in and charge us or want more money than what they needed, and now they come in and ask.
They came and said, we're gonna run it for a year, and we'll reassess and look at it.
Exactly what they said.
Right, and then we're not gonna ask you anything more than we need, and they're already hitting us for three hundred thousand, you're saying that they don't need three hundred thousand.
I, I mean, in my opinion, I don't think they.
Well, let's look at it, uh, the, I mean, the one is, one thing about this unique to Rankin County that I didn't. Understand until I started studying this ambulance stuff a year and a half ago, is our number, just say a hundred and fifty thousand people. When you compare us to some county like Madison, and, and they're at a hundred, all of their hundred is almost in one place. We are populated, you know, all over the county, so there is a lot more runs with distances. Our population is spread out all over the county.
And AMR don't have as many ambulances, I mean, uh, Madison doesn't have as many ambulances as we are.
Well, see, that's something else too, you know, how are they playing in all this?
Do what now?
Like, how are they playing in all this now, too, you know? Not necessarily be so one hundred percent on these guys that, you know, whatever they offer us, cause they are doing a good job. And we, uh, they're doing a phenomenal job. I mean, we need to get.
We need to have the discussion. And, and that's why I told Laura, just for math purposes, for our sheet, that three hundred was, in my mind, outrageous, I wouldn't vote for that. But, put that in there so we can see it on the numbers, how it works out.
I would like, just like any other department head, come in here and show us.
Exactly, they need to be in here too. They tell them Bob, they're going up, they need to be coming over here and say, hey, this is where we're at.
After they talked to Bob, I talked to him last week, and told him the same thing, either get with each supervisor individually, or come to the meeting, and say, we'll do either one, you tell us what you want. I hadn't told him what we wanted yet.
I'd like for them to come present to us all.
We can do it on the fifteenth.
I, I don't care about the individual, finish it all.
Can we do that in executive? It's all gonna be open record.
Which, which is, which is why I suggested you do it in a private setting, one-on-one, because you're dealing with their business.
A lot more about it than us, you know?
But I mean, I just said, I don't, I think we all need to be here to ask questions.
You know, we are gonna have different questions, it's gonna be hard for us all to compare notes to. Maybe we can do two at a time.
I know, one thing that I'm happy with is the times. In a long time, so.
No, we're all happy, that's not a question, what they're doing.
I wish we could kinda camouflage. And.
Have a discussion together.
If we put it in budget, we might as well just.
Yeah, I agree, oh hardly, Bob don't, but, you know?
Different, different situation.
It's all fruit. Um, so, yeah, that's gonna be a pretty big number then.
Dollar guy was looking at this video, this, this baby.
But they're so boring, I don't think they could sit through this whole deal, starting at nine o'clock.
Cutting off.
As you say, we already trimming as much as we can trim, so where are we gonna get another two hundred?
Where are you looking for two hundred, for what?
The subsidy, I've already put it in.
Oh, that's.
That's why I told him to put it in there, just so you would have to say, oh my gosh, where are we gonna find?
Uh, but I would say, just kinda push it over here, we know we got it there, but, um.
It's like, it's like even things, it's like she said, if we leave it six months from now.
It's in there.
Well, no, we just go and get it.
Exactly, I agree, I think we oughta take it out.
Just leave it out, and then time comes, crunch time, you know what we gotta do, you know? Like, yeah, everything else we do around here, we got the money.
Gotta amend it.
We can just take a mile and a half out of some, one road jake.
Man, y'all, you know how much money spent in my district last year? Big goose egg, zero.
Wrong, wrong, wrong. That is crazy. You're not playing poker with these guys. No, it's big zero.
There has been zero overlay dollars spent in my budget.
But where's it at?
Your district.
Now, we'll get it somewhere.
So, what did Mike have to offer up? I missed that, good meeting, huh?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, alright, good, good.
Uh, Judge and, um, they're on the very bottom of the first page, they should be here in a minute, calling something.
So, I'm guessing, did y'all discuss with Bob about the building deal, or did that not even come up?
Yeah, it came up.
It's, it's.
Y'all got it?
Look, look at the land.
Well, she'd already took care of it.
Yeah, that's right. I, I think you did a good job.
Well, I would just. Yeah, well, not only that, those are metal buildings, and I heard Brandon is about metal buildings, you know, so we don't need to be putting any more up.
What?
The store, store.
He's getting to Bob, he's trying to get Bob worked up. He's trying to push your buttons down there, you won't even, hey, you won't even acknowledge him, you didn't hurt his feelings over here.
But Jared did what? Oh, man.
I, I've always got you counted, because I know Jared and I are very, Jared and I and Daniel, not Daniel, but Stephen are very sensitive about our roads and the road budget. Cause we got so much roads in our district, we know that Daniel's concerned about the damn water and where it's going, you know? So, we can have a couple of money on, on drainage, it'd be good if Daniel knew, we just don't care about.
Exactly, I agree, I'm glad you focused and acknowledged that.
What is it like linking for, you overloaded?
I can tell you, I, I have a lot of drainage too.
So, did, uh, did the mayor of Pearl contact you guys?
Do you wanna do this on the recording session?
I asked for it, y'all decided not to do it.
Yes, you did, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I never heard anything out.
I haven't heard a word from you.
I hadn't heard, I hadn't even.
I talked to him last week, they had that ball field, you know, with lights and all. But, you know, I told him that we already gave the schools three hundred and fifty thousand this year, and I wasn't gonna come back and ask.
That wasn't exact words to me, but, yeah, okay.
I just basically said, you know, once you open, I said, oh, Panama's box routine again.
Well, I met with him last week, and I told him, you know, if they're gonna come ask for something, it needs to be more substantial than five thousand dollars.
It was what's more, to me.
I don't think so.
That's a poker play right there, what are you asking again now?
What number, how to care, I said, what number gets your?
Anything with another zero. One more.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
So, if I, if I tell Butch, I tell Butch, come, you come ask the board for five hundred grand.
I gave it to him. I gave it to him. That, that thirty-five thousand at red light, see, I voted against it, it was too small.
You did vote for the, you did vote for the bridge down there.
They did, you did.
I thought it was three two, no, I didn't vote for it.
Oh, get out of here.
My god.
That's a Democrat in disguise, right there.
Oh, man.
Democrat in disguise, not big enough.
Oh, my god.
Six months ago, three months ago.
He watched, he goes to come over and ask for some money for that, that amphitheater now, I need a million. It's big enough for you?
The red light, and he called me and said, I didn't vote for that.
Cause I think he voted the first time for it, cause he had his little bridge in Pearl he needed to get built.
No, that was way after, way after.
Well, you've heard wrong, you should just call me. You get the lowdown, I'll be honest with you.
Let's just go ahead and look at it.
Is that, uh? Is this, uh? What line item is this?
They are on the first page at the very bottom, one sixty-three.
Just let them wait, we'll bring Mike in. Let's grab Mike, let's bring him in, ahead.
I mean, what he's got, he knows what it is.
Let's talk, hey, guys, let's talk about the district attorney's office. While we're waiting, because I think they want a hundred, hundred twenty-five, I thought.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that. I hope not. Uh, I hope we at least split it with them.
Well, we kinda split it with them last year, and said we'd do one last year and one this year.
That's another person altogether.
I thought it was a whole new person they wanted.
It was.
It is.
It is.
I, I guess, but, I guess before I went that route on the DA's office, I wanna be sure we talk to the sheriff's office first. I wanna be sure we maximize, in my opinion, to maximize any kind of additional personnel they're asking for on the sheriff's side of things.
He's already getting his.
Only three? Six total, and it, and it's in there, okay.
And to take care of this foolish no truck road order, it's been funny to throw another deputy or two.
Oh, get out of here, man, get out of here.
Thanks for your support there, Bob.
Paul, is Judge coming?
He is, yes, I can.
Well.
He said three minutes out.
So, you wanna go and get started with us? Alright. Not really.
I can see, this must be gonna be a tough one, not really.
Yeah, no, I'd rather wait on the judge.
Question me, is it easier to say no to Paul than it is to the judge?
Exactly, hello?
Get started, Paul.
That's why people wait up for the judge.
Alright. Y'all ready?
Yeah.
Y'all wanna wait for him?
Nah, I say go ahead, if you're ready, seriously, I mean. Judge Brew.
Hey, Judge.
So, you want a reduction judge, is that it? What number are we?
One sixty-three, bottom of the first.
Oh, I can get there. Oh, wow, they won't.
What is this? Which ordinance?
I understand county market's going pretty good.
Is it?
Yeah, I heard.
They're well advertised.
Mike and, uh, Toby that, uh, pick it up.
I saw they got a billboard on, I could've swore I saw on Lakeland Drive.
We got about eight of them throughout the county at no charge.
Wow, who, who owns those?
There's a lady that is helping, and she's getting them donated that works for Lamar.
Hey.
Well, that's great.
And when they're empty spaces. Yeah, if they don't have a spot.
Can't control, can't control.
Paul, Paul, you ready to get it?
Let's go. Talk me, uh, if you can, Paul, just kinda, just quickly kinda run through your additional increases and.
Yes, sir. Um, essentially, you know, roughly about a third of our total budget, um, we're having funded through grants through our administrative office of courts, uh, drug, family drug court grant. We have an administrative office of courts, juvenile drug court grant, we have an administrative office of courts, youth court support fund, and we have a department of public safety planning, uh, drug court grant. So, uh, just wanna make sure y'all were aware, I think most of y'all already know that, um, so we're bringing a good many dollars in to, uh, to help fund part of our programs. We spend that money on, uh, several personnel, um, we purchased most of our office supplies, our drug testing supplies, and, um, uh, the car that we just purchased, that was funded through our grant money. Um, so we do have a, a good bit of grant money. We have shifted some of our, uh, grant funding away from those supplies and pushed it more towards our personnel to help, uh, accommodate one of our new employees we just hired. Um, one, one of the things that, and I know Judge Brew wanted to, to talk to you, I'll, I'll save the, um, the, there was one request for the parent representation program, I know he has a lot of information on that that he wants to talk to you about. But, uh, the one, um, new county employee that we're asking for is, uh, would be a new intake officer. So, in the youth court system, um, every investigation that's handled by child protection services, that investigation comes over to the youth court for review. Um, we also serve as the court that handles all of their requests for custody, visitation, all of those orders. Since, uh, that position was created, uh, the abuse and neglect intake officer, that, that position was created by Judge McDaniel over sixteen years ago. So, we have one person that handles all of those requests. Um, the child protection services, after they went through the Olivia Wilde lawsuit, um, they increased their, um, caseworkers, their social workers by, it's, they are now, they now have roughly almost forty social workers for this county. Back when that was created, my position, uh, the intake officer, when that was created sixteen years ago by Judge McDaniel, there were roughly eight social workers. So, there's now five times as many, uh, workers out in the field, so, you know, five times as many requests are coming back to the youth court. And our intake officer is just buried in their, uh, in their caseload that they, they have those requests.
Human Services said, uh, a lot of that increase was because of, uh, the other judge.
I can't speak for that. Um, I, I will tell you that, um, they had two different divisions, uh, they had a Pearl, um, child services, uh, workers, and then a Rankin County. So, um, I, I don't know what the total number is. I, I don't know if the forty is including that Pearl youth court number, I, I don't believe so. But, uh, I know it's a, it's a five times as many workers than when we first started roughly sixteen years ago with our position at the youth court.
Paul, um, you know, I, I think that court's gonna go away, so how is that gonna impact our court?
Well, ob- obviously, there'll be an increase, um, uh, my personal opinion. Um, I, I know the number of cases that they're currently supervising, I, I don't think the number would be as big, uh, um, if it was transferred to our court system. Um, I, I know some of the requirements that that court has, and I, I just don't see that it would be the same number of cases that they would have to supervise.
If it go down, actually.
Well, on, the, there would be an increase of referrals over, because obviously from the Pearl, city of Pearl, all of those referrals will be coming to us to be processed. Now, the, the number of cases that the child protection services are having to supervise, yes, that number would probably go down. There's a huge, I think, philosophy difference in the two judges, and, um, I, I think there would be less of a requirement on child protection services to supervise that. But the demand on the court, you know, would go up because we would have to process more cases, all those from the city of Pearl.
So, we not adapted over the years in terms of dealing with this, who, how we done it? I'll be honest with you, man, I, I get so lost when it comes to y'all's budget, cause you got fifteen hundred grants out there, and they pay for some of this, some of that.
Right, and, and we're actually looking at two new, uh, possible.
Like I said, you know, so it's difficult for us to know which pot we're paying who out of. But, I, I about done got the word down, when y'all put in for travel, I just rubber stamp it, you know, cause it's for some grant or another.
Right, and that, that's what we try to do, to, um, make sure that that is not pushed onto the county, uh, budget.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
As long as you're not shooting.
Thanks for coming, Judge.
Good to see you.
Paul, Paul, yeah, Paul was just going over everything, just kinda picking up things, I think.
Well, he may, he may not have got the latest, I got the latest and greatest. Uh, I had the pleasure of meeting with, uh, Mayor Wyndham and Dr. Morgino from the city of Pearl this morning. The mayor, uh, wants to, uh, discontinue the city youth court for the city of Pearl and consolidate that with the county. Now, uh, he obviously has to get the board of aldermen to go along with him, but I feel like it's probably gonna happen. Some of you may not have the advanced knowledge that some of the rest of us have had on this issue. Uh, this is further along than any discussion has ever been with them, uh, which is good for them and good for the county. Uh, but it, it is seemingly in the works, uh, and if that occurs, uh, then there's some additional cases that will be taken on for them, uh, which I think would be fine. The, the one thing that it does do, uh, it alleviates some difficulties that, uh, the service providers would have, um, and also law enforcement, uh, and helps consolidate some issues, and it limits some of the county's liability. Uh, cause currently, uh, we have some liability as a result of the city of Pearl having their own youth court. Uh, particularly when it comes to kids staying at our detention facility. So, I wanted to give y'all that, uh, latest and greatest, because that is something that has evolved in the last two weeks. And I'm not quite sure where it's gonna be, the mayor indicated to me that he was gonna be presenting his entire budget package to the board of aldermen, which I think has a little number of things that need to be cut, or services need to be altered for them, and I think this is gonna be one of those packages that they're looking at, so.
So, y'all gonna continue with some of the programs they already have there, like the parole or the, the?
Well, what, here, let me give you a big picture of what's going on real quick in a short second. The division of youth services under the department of human services provides our probation officers, which we in the county are supposed to have four, we're down to two, they owe us two. They're having some budget issues at the state, uh, with the department of human services. Um, and quite frankly, we're trying to get the division of youth services moved from the department of human services to another agency. Because the way DHS is structured, youth services is, when, when DHS gets a ten percent budget cut, it translates into a forty percent budget cut for the division of youth services, cause they're all state dollars. And they've had significant cuts over the years to the point where they're almost at extinction. So, they're owing us two, we're in the process of trying to get two bodies for that. The city of Pearl has two assigned to them right now, we would get those two bodies to the county, plus we would get all of the CPS workers that are assigned to the city of Pearl. We, we have about seventy kids that are in foster care for the county, the city of Pearl has almost three hundred.
Yeah, she came here, I think in January, and was requesting more space, and she plowed, told us that, you know, Pearl's judge was the cause of a lot of the increase of personnel. That's what she said.
Who's their judge?
I'm not gonna dispute that, uh, but, uh.
Did I, I mean, am I wrong? That's probably what she said.
Well, I can tell you there's some policies in effect that drive those numbers up, and that's what I told, told the mayor. And I'll tell y'all, because I told the mayor this morning that there's some people floating around out there trying to seek a lawsuit against the city right now with regard to fees and costs that they're passing on to, to families.
So, is that gonna stop, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Okay. I, it may already be stopped.
No, it's not.
Okay.
But it will be, but what the mayor, uh, i- has advocated for them is that they need to concentrate, because they have such a large volume of criminal cases, uh, they need to have two days a week of city court over there, and they don't need to devote their resources to youth court, uh, and quite honestly, a- after he earned all of the services that we've gotten through grants and otherwise for the county, he knows that they can't do that for their kids, and he wants their kids to have benefit of it. So, we're, we're in the process of trying to look at that, but should, should those come over, uh, that's a, that's a good chunk of real estate going with it. But actually, it works out best for the county, it works out best for the state, because the state folks have been clamoring for a while now to get rid of the city of Pearl, because, uh, three hundred kids in foster care at the cost of four hundred dollars plus a day.
And we have seventy, and they have three hundred?
Yeah, and their, their portion of the population is not anywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
So, Paul was just asking us for, or telling us how you need an additional employee.
Yeah, let me, let me, what, what's been going on, we've gotten the benefit of, of some, uh, at, at Paul and mine's, uh, work expense, uh, last several years, that the United States Supreme Court came down with a case, United States, uh, versus Lassiter. Uh, and Lassiter, uh, was a family case where somebody's termination of parental rights involved an indigent parent. Basically, the, the US Supreme Court said, if you have an indigent parent and you're gonna terminate their parental rights, you have to provide them legal counsel, just like you would if you provided them legal counsel in a criminal case. Well, that has since expanded and expanded to the point that we're on the verge of the Mississippi Supreme Court ordering the counsel be provided at the time of removal. So, if you remove a kid from a parent's custody and they're indigent, you have to provide them counsel. Uh, which is good and bad, it's good to discourage you from removing kids needlessly from families, but it's also bad, because that's an expense you have to pony up. We've been able to do that the last several years, because we got a grant from the administrative office of courts through their court improvement program that covered the sixty thousand dollars that it costs to provide that service through Mission First. We've done that without any, uh, cost back to the county. This year, the state ponied up some money, uh, to the parent representation project, and they didn't pony up the full amount, we had the full amount at one point, but then they cut it back. And so now they're in a position of asking the counties to pony up half of the cost of the parent representation. Yeah, okay, and, well, two positions. Parent, parent rep, then, well, I'll, I'll get to it.
We, we jumped on Paul pretty hard, Judge, to be honest with you, we had him on the ground, so.
If I can get, if I can look at him as him when y'all get through and then keep on beating.
We jumped on him pretty hard, he fought us for a while.
Uh, he wrestled y'all, but the parent rep portion of it is, uh, that they would, they want the counties that are, that have those positions to pony up half, which our half would be thirty thousand. Uh, the, the difference is that we've gotten a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of representation so far for free. Uh, so I can understand their need for us to pony up. So, I, I did tell them though, you know, this is lean budget times for everybody, and, you know, thirty thousand dollars is not just sitting on a tree out there waiting for somebody to pluck it off. So, whatever, uh, whatever could be provided by, by y'all would be appreciated in that regard, and we will work endeavor to get, get our cost. Ultimately, we would like to see the state bear the responsibility for it. But that's gonna be something politically, we're gonna have to work with y'all to make, to have happen. Uh, the second thing, though, you're talking about the intake officer, uh, what we have seen over time is as the economy has gone up and down, um, our delinquency, our criminal activity among juveniles has gone down, but our abuse and neglect, our dependency has gone up. Uh, and some of it makes a little sense, some of it doesn't. Uh, what's gone up is the use of crystal meth. Uh, everybody's screaming about opioids. Uh, and we have an opioid problem with Norcos and Darvocets and Lor tabs and all of that. But we haven't gotten to the heroin that quite as much as the folks in Ohio have. Where our problem comes in is crystal meth. Uh, several years ago, when they took pseudoephedrine from behind the counters and they pushed it, pushed it back behind the counter, all our local crystal meth, uh, moonshine manufacturers went down to almost nothing. But what happened was the Mexican cartels realized that there was still a lot of demand, so they started shipping over ice, which is a purer form of crystal meth, and got everybody up to speed on buying their ice. So, a lot of the families that we're seeing are quite frankly using that now, and it's more problematic than anything else. That and our, uh, prescription pharmaceutical problem.
So, the ice, is that a, is that another form of crystal meth?
It's a pure form of crystal meth.
Well, how, do they need the different ingredients to make that?
Well, they make it in a lab. Yeah. You, you have to have a bit of chemist to make ice.
So, that's not local made then?
The local, the local yokels could use Uncle Fester's fourth edition guide, don't have a manufacturer crystal meth.
Yeah.
And go to Walmart and buy all the stuff they needed, and then do what they call shake and bake in the parking lot, they put it in a bottle, shake it up, let, let it react, and they usually put the bottle between their legs, and if they didn't, if they didn't get it out fast enough, it would explode.
Oh, lord.
And depending upon which model of person we had, sometimes it would eliminate us having future problems in youth court.
Yeah.
Make that hit quick.
This, this stuff is more potent, uh, cause it's pure, but we, we got a good bit of it coming in along with other crystal manufactured out elsewhere coming in. Um, so our dependency rates have gone up, so what we're looking at is an additional intake officer to help with our, our dependency caseload as well as our delinquency, because we also have truancy that, uh, is going up. This past year, the legislature tried to raise the age of truancy up to the age of eighteen, from seventeen to eighteen. Um, and that's a big increase. It passed through the legislature and went to conference on the House and Senate side, and for some reason, the conferries. And for some reason, the conferees never signed the bill. But it came pretty darn close to passing. And I expect it'll pass next year.
Do you really?
Oh, yeah.
18-year-olds can be.
Compelled to go to school.
That's going to be tough, huh?
Well, that's, the biggest age range for truants that we have are 16, 17, and 18. Because that's when they get to thinking they're all grown and nobody can tell them how to do anything.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where we were looking is to add an intake officer. And the other is quite frankly, knowing what I know after this morning, that would be a, a good addition. Because of the City of Pearl, we would have additional intake from them. But that's, that's pretty much where we are right now on those two things. But, you know, it's up to the board's prerogative, whatever y'all would like. And we certainly understand that and we're willing to do whatever we need to do to help.
Judge, do the youth offenders, do they automatically come to you or they get referred? If it's a city person like you, like we're at Pearl, I mean, is, is the police officers or is the city judge over at Pearl? Are we going to refer this to the youth court, right county youth court?
No. What happens if they get picked up in the City of Pearl right now for a delinquent offense? They go through, they go through the City of Pearl Youth Court. Now, you know, what, what's supposed to happen is law enforcement is supposed to make contact with the youth court judge and then the judge decides whether to detain or not detain. I can tell you that as a matter of practice, the City of Pearl has always detained everyone to keep their numbers up.
I guess my question would be, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
And it, and it didn't cost them anything to house them at our facility.
I know.
Heck of a deal, wasn't it?
It's a heck of a deal.
How can we share the law with our, our sister cities, you know? Is there any, any formula out there for us to, to look at potentially that say, okay, City of Brandon or City of Pearl or Flowood or whatever, you got a number of kids coming out? You know, we're having to cater to it. I mean, is there any kind of rationale in that thinking or are we wasting my time?
Yeah, you are.
Wasting my time?
Well, I mean, one thing, say Brandon picks up a kid, who's to say that's from Brandon? He, he could live at the reservoir or a pocket, you know, so.
We have a lot of transient kids because of the shopping opportunities or shoplifting opportunities that come through. I, I will say this, the jurisdictions that we deal with have done remarkably well and are remarkably prudent in the ones that use our detention facility. And because we're able to keep our numbers at a manageable level, we're able to use the remainder of the facility to house those kids from anywhere from 27 to 40 counties, depending on what day of the week you look, or other counties who are paying for our services. So that, that is a good.
But that's gone down some, hasn't it?
It has. It fluctuates. If you look over time, it, it's really an odd thing because you really wouldn't expect it to go this way. When school starts back, it starts increasing. Detention starts increasing because there are more people looking at kids, teachers, parents, everybody. So you start having an incline all the way to Christmas. Right around Christmas, detention rates will drop because everybody wants to be good to get their Christmas presents. They'll get their Christmas presents and then it'll start climbing again. And it'll climb again until May. And in May, when everybody gets turned loose to go home, it starts plummeting. And you'll reach the bottom of the barrel about July. July to the end of August, or end of July is about when it bottoms out. So we'll be starting back up on the curve. And for whatever reason, it's shown that way over time because we've looked at it over time and that's the way the trend line works. But I, I, to answer your question though, the cities have worked in the past with us. At one time, we had a shelter that we used down there off of the old county barn property. Well, livestock barn, yeah.
Old campus facility?
The old, well, I'm trying to remember what we used to call that thing. It's behind where Roger's Dabs is.
It's still locked, yeah.
Yeah. We still have it, but we're not using it as a shelter facility because what happened over time is the department changed their regulations with regard to how many kids you could have in custody at a particular location. If you had more than four, then you had to, you had to get licensed as a residential facility. And that's not something that we could do. So the cities were paying money to a, to, to the Shelter Care, which was a nonprofit, which was accumulating.
Really? I never knew that.
Mm-hmm. Like the City of Pearl donated 300 to 400 a month.
I thought we always figured the bill.
Yeah, no, they were donating. Now that has since stopped. But I mean, I think it's, it's something that we could talk to the cities about again to see, you know. One thing that I can tell you that we do do is that we get the chambers involved. The chambers involved with all of the cities to try and help with opportunities and mentors and stuff like that. Rankin Chamber's been one of the best with that. And Flowood has helped us as well as the City of Pearl. But that's what I told the mayor and them over there, that we would be leaning on Chamber to assist over in Pearl as well. But as far as a statutory scheme, you can get into some inter-local agreements to do that. The only one that I know has done that was the City of Jackson and Hines County. And if that's any model, I don't know if we want it. Because the city, the Hines County Youth Court is a beast in and of itself. They, well, they, the judge sues the Board of Supervisors and they sue him. And I think they're still in the midst of litigation over there, to be honest, as to who runs what. And now, and now they have two judges over there that are doing youth court. They moved all their abuse and neglect cases as of last week to Raymond and all of their delinquencies to Henley Young off of McAllen down there. Although it sounds like we may need to go into the boat building business.
We do at the reservoir, there's no doubt. Well, congratulations anyway. This will be the first time since you've been a judge, or county judge, you're going to get to have the whole court.
Well, I don't know that it's a said, I don't know that it's all said and done. I know the, the mayor has been adamant that he wants to make it happen. I don't know, you know, where he stands with his Board of Alderman. Obviously, they have the final say in it. But I, I would encourage you, if you have communication with him, to look at it and do it because from our standpoint, and I wasn't going to get into this with him, our liability is great because they send us their kids. We have no control over the kids in the building. So if a City of Pearl kid gets hurt in our facility, we get sued.
I don't even think we're going to go through all that again. I, I think it's a done deal.
I pray.
It might be one against it, but it's going to pass this time, so I'm pretty confident of that.
I'm, I'm hopeful.
So how many grants are y'all up to now? Is it more than 20 or less than 20?
I don't know. Janice and Laura needs some ad bill. I'm sure I need to owe them a box of.
It is, y'all are so unique. It's, there's no way to pin y'all down on anything because I know y'all worked hard on it and thank you a lot, but I know those fluctuate too. Some get funded partially and, you know, some get cut out, some new ones pop up.
Well, we, we have, we're always looking for opportunities. This, what we have going on right now, we're one of six sites nationally that were selected for our drug court, what they call the Drug Court Learning Collaborative with the Juvenile Drug Courts. So we were one of six sites nationally that are piloting the, the new regulations that came down for that. So we're hopeful that since we're one of those six sites, that we will be able to get some money to implement that and hopefully offset some of our costs. I'm not telling them that, but that's what our goal is.
That'll be good.
And the other is that we're also part of the zero to three initiative on our delinquency, on our dependency side to do early childhood learning opportunities from zero to 36 months. And we've got some great national recognition from that. Senator Cochran's office is in the process of trying to help us out on the federal side to get some additional funds to us for that if, if, if possible. He just wrote a letter for us to the Department of Health and Human Services, to Secretary Price last week. So we've been working. The other is that we're, we're kind of, what's kind of hanging everything up right now in DC is that there's no grants that are coming down from the administration because they're not exactly sure what they're doing in terms of policy and direction. So whenever they do cut loose, there's going to be a bunch. But they just haven't got the people in place to make those decisions yet. But hopefully we'll know about it. Paul's active in the National Court Administrators Association. I just finished up a term as Secretary for the National Council of Juvenile Family Court Judges. And I got appointed back in last fall to the Federal Advisory Committee for the Department of Justice on juvenile justice issues. So we try to figure out and stay ahead of the curve and know where the next cycle's going to be so we can try and tag some of it if we can, bring it back here.
Well, I'm more thankful because y'all always ask, you know, if we had a position hired through a grant, y'all have cut back whenever they cut back. So I, I know y'all have stayed diligent on all that.
Yeah, that was painful, by the way. Painful. I didn't, I didn't like to have them tell two people they had to go. But that's just the way it was. But anything we can do for y'all, we do, we would like to, I know Mr. Gaines got to come visit with us this tomorrow. I don't know that y'all got to come make Christmas dinner last year, but the first week in December, we'll be setting our Christmas dinner. So y'all be sure to come and bring everyone. And the other is we'll probably be having a meet and greet sometime for the legislators over there. The legislative leadership to come over.
I hope you have better luck with them.
Well, yeah, we've had some interesting times this session. And, and one of the things that we've, we as the county and the other counties have got to figure out how to collectively get more money out of them for services that they're requiring us to provide on our nickel as opposed to their nickel. They do a much better job of shoving things down than they do taking them back.
Maybe it's time to vote Democrat.
Maybe. Hey Judge, the only thing I wanted to ask, if you could, I know we have a part to hear on your raises and stuff like that. Just maybe speak on that just for a second.
Sure.
How to get your, we want to get your area back in line as far as that goes.
We, we have one.
How out of whack they are.
Yeah, one, one, one is, LaSheryl Wilder is, is our intake officer currently. And I, I will tell you, she's doing the yeoman's work of about three people. And, and I would not want to lose her. And while we can't pay her what she would be worth on the outside market, we would like to try and increase her some because she is doing our intake, our, our delinquency, our truancy, and also running our drug machine, our ear analysis. Doing about 13 other things too. That's the only one that we had specifically asked for a, a specific amount for. Now, I will tell you this, we, we were able, because of our way of funding work, to secure a vehicle to try and maximize our, thanks to Laura and Bridget, is to maximize our money. So we had some money that we were going to lose if we were to give it back. And rather than give it back, we were able to secure a vehicle. And I think on the vehicle, we, we were going to have to add into the budget somewhere. Fuel and all that kind of stuff. That happened at the last minute. But that was one of those things I did not want to give the money back. If I could have bought a person, it would have been legal, I would have bought a person. I think they outlawed that last time I checked.
Well, thank you, Judge. We appreciate you coming in. Judge, anything else?
No.
Steve, Jerry? I'm assuming Bob doesn't either, so.
All right.
Hey, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you for what you do as a judge very much.
Congratulations, man.
I hope I can take you.
Good to see you, folks.
I got to talk for a couple minutes.
There you go, yeah.
Good to see you, Paul. It was good to see you, baby.
Oh.
See you again.
It's overflowing right now. So when you're always flooded, just rain, just.
Can't dilute it.
I got a Wigan's deal.
I hope Bob didn't flood off.
No, we'll send somebody after him in a minute.
I'm looking for something to eat. So I did a Wigan's deal a few weeks ago.
Perkay.
A Wigan's.
They got it too.
Yeah, they came across there. Yeah, we were down.
Okay, we're down.
Right there. We got like 12-inch.
We're getting it hard right now. My phone's fixing to explode. Ms. Laura, Mike, imagine he's out on the road now, even in the storm? I've got, I've got seven text messages in the last 15 minutes.
Oh, I got the picture.
Already? I hadn't got any video livestream yet.
Earlier, Bob.
The flood happened.
They don't realize it's raining. Rain creates.
Some of this budget goes pay for dispatchers?
Oh, I got them sending me already telling, they'd sent me earlier. They're talking about, need change and they can tell us what size. Contact them, but tell us what size.
He's never had any, what a help.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you see me, I'll tell you what size it needs to be.
Is Mike even here, Bob?
Larry? Oh, hey.
Larry Swells?
Larry Swells in his office? Jessica, you need to intervene there. Can you take care of that? Can you handle that for us? Tell him we need Mike on in here. Tell Larry we sent, pass it on.
He better get to the reservoirs where he better get to. That's where I need him then. It's raining.
Did, did we take anything out of the sheriff's budget that he submitted to you?
Yes.
What was? Just straight vehicles? Anything else he asked for, he got?
He gets always the.
I've asked, I've asked. I asked all the sheriff at most times.
Okay, one sec.
I think one, something.
Thank you.
We never, Sheriff's never.
I just wanted to ask, thank you. Hey, getting back to the tax collector thing. You know, maybe we could look going forward, like Craig said, something going forward. I think it would be a good line for us to take and say, this is your budget, how much you're getting. And if you choose in the future, let somebody go out and do it. Any of those classes need to come out of your existing budget. We're not going to add on to your budget. What do you think?
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Now, I know the statute may not say that.
Well, no, no, I mean, they can get all the raises they want. It's just coming out of their existing budget. And we're not going to ask to the budget to make that happen.
Sometimes we think.
Make this quick and get to the reservoir. It's flooding up there. Hey, yeah, I mean.
That's the only part of the county is flooding, so you better run up there.
It's the only part that needs to be addressed.
Right.
Get right at that one, because I was just checking.
Right.
Hey, is it raining up north?
I got pictures if you want to look at them.
Mike's budget is on the short, the small short sheet. It will be on the second page. Department, 150, 160. Department, one fifty, one sixty, here at the top.
One fifty, one sixty?
Yes. His road maintenance line is one fifty. You can see that we have receipts of eleven billion, eight forty-one, two fifty, and it's gonna, in order to meet the budget that he says is gonna require cash of two billion, eight hundred and thirty-two. Now that includes about the two billion five that we've been putting in there for paving, which it hasn't, I don't know how much we spent this year, I think probably more than any other time, but we've done it over the last three years, and most of it has ended up coming back into the road, it hasn't all been spent.
We're down to about seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, he's been, he had a better look at it.
What do you mean the two fifty or two point five added in?
Out of cash over the past three years.
I thought we were just taking it out of what was budgeted annually.
No.
Taking out cash to come in to do roads, overlays and paving. But up until this year, not very much of that that has gone over in there has been spent. It's been put over there, but it comes back in in cash.
So what you're saying is, we have a budget amount, save a million dollars for overlay and asphalt overlay, and we'll take an additional two and a half million to do what he says he needs to do, but at the end of the day, most of it comes back because we had stick.
It has, it has.
I think we've always had the three million budgeted, and then the board several years ago updated another, made it equal to five.
Right.
Five, but we didn't, we didn't put enough millage in there to cover the five.
But that should see it though. I thought that whenever we increased the amount of budget, I thought that was taken from the existing budget and just shift some around inside that budget.
Listen, it's always been the cash.
Holy cow.
The amount, but like I said, in the last couple of years, when you've been doing it, it hasn't all been spent.
It's gone back.
It's just come back into your cash, and then it's been reallocated the next year. Well, this year, you're, he's about three hundred and thirty-two thousand over that. We have additional personnel, there's another crew with three men, that would put us up to seventy-five employees. Now, the one thing that is not built in here is any kind of overtime, which he has, and the reason why, since I've been here, we had sixty-five slots, personnel slots in road. There were only about fifty-six of those slots ever filled, so you had room to play with your overtime. Well, now we have seventy-two slots and we have seventy-one filled. So.
So what are you saying now, the three hundred, what is our, that number, is that above and beyond the two point five that's added, or?
Three hundred something, yeah. For personnel.
So we're more like at five point four million dollars.
Well, you've got three within, three within your, within your revenue that you're gonna bring in. You've got eleven million, eight forty-one, two fifty coming in, but you can see your expenses are fourteen million, six seventy-three. So you've got close to three million coming out of cash, going in there to meet this fourteen million.
Which is terrible business. I thought all along till now that whenever that budget amendment to spend the extra two million, that we, oh my gosh.
No, we couldn't have had it, wouldn't have had it been, wouldn't have brought it out or something, Jay.
Well, yeah, you just take it out of that eleven point eight million that comes annually, you just take something.
No, 'cause that's all, every year allocated to the match, revenues allocated to the match. So everything you bring in over that is cash.
I mean, that's just not good business though, 'cause you're gonna end up spending all your cash eventually.
And we got what, twenty million in road?
That's what she was, that's what Laura was saying, we have, we've been able, we've been dumping about two million back, two million's been coming over, but two million's been dumping back in there this year.
We just can't, for the weather and stuff like that, we just get shut, we get shut down.
Well, we just get delayed from asphalt people, and like last year, we had a bunch of work that went over into this year that should have been done last year, Mr. Bob.
And it went back up even further than that now, let's go back.
I mean, I think that's even.
Let's go back since the year, honestly, George Bobo retired. We've been playing catch-up ever since. That year, we didn't do, y'all, y'all weren't here, we didn't do much overlay work because the transition between one and the other, we just didn't happen. So we were basically a year behind right there. Then there was some, some money that was there that had to go back in. So we were playing catch-up really for the last, what, six years? Seriously, we, we just now did some roads this year that were set to be done the year George retired.
Well, Jerry, really and truly, I mean, actually, the three million's always been allocated or budgeted for. Well, that twenty million didn't happen overnight. George always through the years, as, you know, there's been more money going over just out of three million.
No, I'm just telling you, I'm just saying what he kept and telling, explaining some of his deal, we have been playing catch-up.
Well, I guess it's always a catch-up situation.
I mean, Andrew Chapel's been on the books for like seven years. It was supposed to have been done seven years ago, the money was set aside for it. But it was, yes.
In oh-seven, we did the bond, and then we had to cut out twenty million out of it that we didn't get to do, the reason it was gonna be sixty million.
No, it never was set aside, Steve, it was taken out of the twenty million, but with the other twenty million we're gonna do, it got cut and several other things.
Got a road, there's another one, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there were roads that's been out there for a lot of years that.
It's been on the plans, but it never funded because they cut out that last year.
Well, all, all the ones that we've talked about were on that twenty million.
Yeah.
So the question is, surely, we, we cannot keep usually excuse, say we're playing catch-up. We need to get called up, but we just need to start using the word catch-up.
I think we, we've done better this year than, if I'm looking at the numbers, this year is better than the last four or five.
Yeah, we're getting, we're almost there, that's my point.
We almost made it.
And my point would be is that twenty million in the road fund's too much. I don't think we need to keep that kind of balance, you know what I mean? Either we need to do, and we've got one or two roads on the, on the project, but we don't, if you gotta cut some debt, it's one or something, but we just don't need to keep that kind of balance.
You got, you got, they've worked for it.
Well, I don't think we have any problem spending it.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need to cut it. I mean, I've got areas that need.
This kind of goes to that big lecture Earl Dean gave y'all three years ago, where it says we're spending more per mile than the other two counties, the Smithville State Island.
We are.
Because we collect too much for the sake of whatever reason, and we've got a lot of miles to take care of, like Rose State care of. But to have these kind of balances, just we.
Well, if you just look at our mileage.
Wait, I, I looked, when you just look at the numbers, it does suggest that we spend more money per mile than the state. But the state has eighty-two counties, and probably only ten percent of those counties have Yazu Clay like we have. And whenever you're doing a hundred times or ninety times more roads, you buy things at a better price, and you, I mean, you can just do a better economic job with a hundred times more than what we have in this county. The next thing, when we work on a road, usually we're not working on more than three miles in one stretch. They're working ten, fifteen miles or twenty. And then the third thing, if you go down Highway four seventy-one and compare that road with our county roads, I think our county roads are as good or better than the state roads in this county.
Right down, right down forty-nine, take a trip down it.
I mean, they're, they're now clipping twice a year now. We do it four or five times. And so it's, it's a little bit more than just looking at figures and saying that we don't do as good a job as the state.
I know, I don't, he wasn't shooting ass about that, it was just coming down to the amount of money we're paying per mile for maintenance is more than anybody else.
But look what you got, you did road.
I know, but the things are, when you do, when you're maintaining. The street piece versus they maintain. Are you talking about couches?
Yeah, yeah, we're hiring everybody. I know, I'm not, but we can't continue to take two million out of every year in cash, you know that.
We're gonna get real close this year.
We're budgeting three million out of revenue.
We just started it three years ago, four years ago.
We have to include any of the cash, but realistically, that's not really gonna happen.
I think what you suggested, we do.
But Jay's right, to some point, if we are able to successful.
We're spending.
We need to back it up.
Right, if you keep that up, every year.
Yeah, 'cause if you continue doing it, that's just terrible business.
It is terrible, well, it is terrible business, but it's a kind of, you know, you're playing against Mother Nature too in this game to some degree. I don't know.
Well, what, what do you think about if we, and Buster actually did this back with Dale, but try to come at it from an angle of letting them go out, do a little study in-house of our condition, our roads, and address what needs to be done, and, you know, and categorize, these roads need to be addressed first and foremost, and then just work off the plan, which is what we really should have been doing all along.
That's what we've been, that's what basically we're doing.
Well, Mike's never had that opportunity to do that.
Well, I'm sure he coordinated some with Buster on some of his roads. That's why they come up with some.
Mike hasn't had an opportunity, I don't think, have you? Have you had?
I mean, I've worked on, I've worked a few roads off that list, you know, that old list or whatever that list is that.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Well, for those reasons.
But I ain't, I ain't worked a hundred percent off of it, Jay, because, I mean, I've got other roads that's failed in the process, you know.
Obviously, the list wasn't working very well with roads like Andrew Chapel that is, I mean, it's nearly down to gravel road and, and it's a high-traffic road.
Just like I said, some of those that were on that same list are just now were addressed, and one of them is still not today, West Pete Road.
Well, I think that was just kinda, that deal was put together pretty quick.
I understand, I'm just saying, there are still some still there.
Just to take care of that extra two, three million that was added in.
I would like to see, I don't know even though it needs to be in-house, I would like to have where it's no political pressure, no opinions from here, people in here, and outs, I mean, even outsource it to, in one of the conferences I was in in the last year, there was somebody that provided that.
Yeah, out of South, out of South Haven.
Yeah.
But they want to come back and, that's ongoing.
Well, I mean, I'm not suggesting just them, but I would, man, I'd love it if we could take politics out and they graded our roads based on the condition they're in and the traffic and things like that, and then Mike could have a plan, and if we would stay out of it, on maintenance on these roads.
But politics does play a part of it.
Well, it shouldn't though. I mean, it really, it shouldn't, and if we could supervise our own selves enough to stay out of it or, you know, and I would, I would do, I mean, I, I think it would be fair to all districts.
Well, I, I, the reason why I said in-house, I was in out, no sense in going and spending a bunch of money to get this done, but just give him opportunity to.
What's that, what'd they charge to come down here, that group?
To categorize.
And I think it'd be good to let them come down and do a little presentation.
Give them an opportunity to go out and address.
Lot of, lot of hundred fifty thousand to do all our roads.
Do all our roads? Well, I think it'd be good to let them come give a presentation at the.
Because I mean, I have, and I mean, I'm just not picking on that, you know, they may not be the only bunch, I have looked at some of that. It is a good thing because they do go out and video the road, they analyze it, they tell you from, from your worst road down to your better road category, you know, and tell you what year this one needs to be done in, or, you know, the wear and surface, how everything is, you know.
It would be, I mean.
It just, it'd be a tool to use to give you a guide.
Wouldn't it be a good thing to let them come down here and talk to us and see if there's something they want to include in it?
I wouldn't even mind, that's just a snapshot, so. And, but it would be great for me, for us, once Mike calls, to be able to say, you know, your road, it's needing some work, but it's not one of the top, it's not gonna be this year, yours is about, you know.
It'll be done in twenty, twenty, you know, something like that.
Yeah, that's a tough one to sell sometimes.
Well, I mean, at least you're being honest and say, the list is public or whatever, and here it is, and if you think it's not right, then, you know.
Well, the way we, the way we've done them in the past, you kinda look at that and then you go by that, but then you kinda characterize, prioritize certain ones, and you gotta look at a lot of times, traffic that's on it.
But not only that, you may not agree, but now taxes that are on that road too, you know, so I think politics does come into play, and that's why I think our staff can handle this.
Well, if you want.
You've been in the job about a year, you're an ambassador over here now?
All year in the high variety.
You think you've covered every road, on every road in the county? Why not? What have you been doing?
If it quit raining, it'd be easier.
Well, you have nothing to do this.
Well, I mean, he, he opened up wide open, and he ain't really had opportunity to sit back and do this for himself, you know? I mean, 'cause this is gonna be ongoing, when we hire somebody and do it, it's just gonna be a snapshot of today.
Never used that much.
It's not gonna take into consideration, this road just failed over here, and everything will be pushed back, you know?
You let me work force came through this, but.
Well, what I like about, and I'm not trying, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to sell this city, Civil Link or whatever, but when they go in there and look at it, I mean, they look at it, and that's why I brought micro slurry to it. You know, the weather this year's had everybody pushed back, I mean, we're just gonna do some of that in this budget cycle, you know, they pushed me back to first October doing that. You know, I see a lot of roads in our county that I think the micro's gonna work good on, it's gonna give us a good coverage on it.
Save a lot of money.
Give us five or six years back more down the road, or about, it looks like the estimate they sent me the other day is gonna run somewhere, it's about thirty thousand dollars a mile.
If you catch the roads the right time, a lot of these neighborhood roads.
We gotta get, we gotta get the roads caught in the right time to do it, and it's gotta be good ground. Now, everybody don't have the, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't go take micro and go, nothing, you missed Steve, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go put it up there.
Asphalt or anything else, so.
I wouldn't go put it up there on old forty-three, you know, there's certain areas you just wouldn't use it, 'cause I mean, I've overlaid some roads since I've been here that, and been less than two years, and I can take you up there and show you where they crack, got two and three inch cracks in them.
I think it'd be a good thing that municipalities would be interested in it.
But.
A lot of it.
Is, is the micro better for you, less traveled roads?
Man, use it in.
Well, wait a minute, yes and no.
Well, yes and, that's right.
If the state's using it on four sixty-nine, four sixty-eight type roads, I watch it put down.
By fact, we looked, we, I took them over and we've looked at some of these subdivisions in Daniels area, we'll have to go to, like in these subdivision, we'll have to go to what they call a E-Flex, which is priced in our contract, supposed to be a little more flexible with turning and stuff like that. But I mean, a lot of these subdivision, instead of us having to mill and do and all that, if we catch them in time, I mean, but we gotta get on the front side to do that, you know? I mean, and that's where.
It's gonna be real good, the city's gonna like it.
That's where this, kind of the city tech, or not city tech, I keep on calling it city tech, what's it called, Civil Link, Jay?
I don't know, I just knew they had South Haven.
Yeah, I think it's called Civil Link, but anyway, they come in here, when they video that road, I mean, you can sit there and look on your computer, Mr. Bob, and look at every road on your, in your county, in your district, on a thing, and write them right there on that computer, and, and they'll tell you whether it needs to be, you know, the micro or if it's complete overlay, you know, it gives you that study on.
What are we discussing?
I, I guess, I don't know.
We got our budget, and then something else didn't.
Budget costs money, that's making a little farther.
Geez, money, sorry I brought it up.
No, but I mean, I, I think there's ways to, to make our money go a little farther than just spending it on overlay, 'cause I mean, basically it's costing you about a hundred thousand a mile to overlay right now, so.
I mean, if we need to get called up, I don't have a problem continuing on with the policy of taking two million out of cash to do it, I've got twenty million sitting over there, but at some point, I'm gonna say enough of Robin Peter to pay Paul, I mean, is it ten million, is it twelve million, or is it fifteen, whatever, I wanna keep it at that level.
We need to probably look and see what we have the money to do, which is three million dollars a year, and see what that gets, because ultimately, that's where we gonna be, or, or less.
But if you look at, listen to some of the things he's saying here, some of that might will help some of it because we're not gonna be having to go out with major overlay. So you're gonna cut some of your costs down.
I, I was just saying, going forward, like, you know, we can't continue to take that extra money out, 'cause eventually it's gonna, we do these big projects, do Andrew Chapel, Gunner Road, that, that's, so what, eight, nine?
About twenty, about twenty-two miles a year, Jay, with three million.
Some of your money though.
That, 'cause, I mean, you're gonna have to mill some of these roads.
Right.
About twenty-two miles a year, about twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
That's, that's another thing, Bob, on the micro, it keeps you just building it up, building it up, building it up.
Well, you just talked about in general, right?
Just more years, we have to start milling.
Not micro, you talking about twenty-two miles.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was just if you were going overlay two.
Hundred thousand a mile.
Right.
You're gonna overlay two inches and do it that way, you know, that's, that's where, that's where you'll be at.
So you're looking at about, you know, at some point, I'm not saying this year or next year, but at some point, that's what you're gonna be looking at, at doing.
But I think we gotta get down the road, I mean, I'm just trying to answer y'all's questions, I mean, I think the more we get, listen, I'm not a computer guy, but I know some of this stuff will help you get down the road a lot further, and lay out a plan for you to spend your money the best way.
Well, I think whenever he did it, it was some huge number like.
Forty thousand, forty million.
Yeah, like forty million dollars.
Oh, yeah, the complete overlay, everything.
If you just, if you just went out and said, oh, get them off.
That's culverts replacing, E-BR place, that's everything.
It was right, it was somewhere between forty and fifty million, I got it in my head.
So even then, though, you know, heck, if you wanna stagger everything, you can go out and buy all your equipment one year, you know, cause then it's all gonna fail at the same time.
No, it's no way you do it that way.
All right, Mike, so tell me, tell me what you're asking for in your increase.
Well, I think where me and Ms. Laura was at was, if we take the two million out of cash and we do the three new employees, that's gonna put me.
Well, the actual increase is around six hundred thousand, and that's gonna mean it requires cash of two million, eight hundred and thirty-two, will leave around two and a half going in there, you've got about over three hundred thousand coming out for reoccurring expenses.
That ain't good at all, we don't need that.
A lot of these leases that we, we started on the equipment that's been bought, it's always some new equipment for next year, and that's the situation, you don't, if you're bringing money in to overlay, and you overlay it, that's fine, if you don't, it goes back in, but anytime you start hitting reoccurring expenses, that's when you start completing a fund.
So, the fourteen million that is, or eleven million that is, that we get millage for, how can we rearrange that to incorporate some of these employees?
Well, you'd have to take, uh, some of it out of your three million that you say you have in there, it would have to come out of that.
That's the only place we have to take it out of?
Basically, you, you've got to stay within, that fund is a fund alone, it collects so much millage, uh, right at twelve, eleven million, eight forty-one, and your budget's fourteen, six, seventy-three, so. That's the only place.
A lot of that's, what is the biggest majority in that annual lead, I know it's not salaries, just equipment?
You've got your leases, you've got equipment that's gonna be purchased outright, um, salaries.
Well, it may be fifty percent of it.
Right now, in roads, there's five million, five hundred thousand, that's in your overlay. And then.
But that's including the addition, right?
Yes, that's including the additional amount of money, um, a lot of it's in your, um, heavy road equipment, um, your leases have gone up.
Yeah, we, so we leased, so we've had our regular lease, and then we leased these last five trucks, you know, that we got this year, and, uh, excuse me, just a second. Ella?
Just take it, that's, that's the reservoir call, get it.
And then the more, the more roads you're doing, your gravel, your shell.
Yeah.
Your asphalt, your, all of that.
Supplies.
Mm-hmm, goes up.
I got you, like.
Maintenance required to keep vehicles up.
Looking at me, it must be my area.
No, it's in your area. Oh, well then, tell them to get back to them later, I'm on a budget, me.
I'm sorry, I got pretty on that.
Insurance, to ensure.
All that equipment.
The vehicles, the more vehicles, the more fuel you have.
Well, we gonna have to cut somewhere, something's gonna have to be shifted around. Either we gonna, I mean, I know at one point.
Well, we could take, you have three, well, you have five, three and five hundred in there, we could take out the five hundred, that would leave you your three that's in there and two brought over.
Well, you mean take out the five hundred, where's the five hundred from?
You've got five billion, five hundred thousand.
Oh, and just not take but two million out, well, I was just talking about dealing with the reoccurring expenses and, and not have that coming out of cash.
Well, I don't know where to get, I mean, you could not put, you could not put on three new crew members, you put on.
Or just don't hire the people.
You put on three, you've got insurance on them, you have vehicles that they have to drive, you have.
All three of them get a vehicle?
No.
No, not necessarily.
When you add, when you add a crew, I mean, you're talking about adding one truck, another piece of equipment, you know.
Well, if you don't have but X amount of dollars, you ain't gonna need but X amount of employees to spend that amount of one dollar.
I understand, Jay. I was asking for more dollars and more employees.
I would like for us to get to a point where we have maybe two crews, one for the south, one for the north, that do nothing but these small maintenance, and, I mean, we have to pull people off of major, or sorry, major things to run up here and fill a couple potholes, or fix a culvert, or trees down over here, and they're, I mean, it's like we're never catching up, this, the work orders are outrunning us, and I know that the money's tight, but we're, it seems like we just get further and further behind because of.
Well, the weather will leave us alone, it would help.
I know, that would help, but, I mean, the thing, and I shouldn't say this, but when you do a good job, people notice it, and they want it down their street now, they see where you fix these areas or these culverts, or that street doesn't have any, they fixed a pothole or fixed this ditch, and, uh, it, it just multiplies, uh, and we're running all over the county chasing rabbits and not getting our major jobs done.
Well, with the pothole factor, wasn't that kind of a way, too, to kind of eliminate some of the.
It, it is really, it's really helped out, the pothole factor has done a tremendous job of freeing up the crews to do, but I mean, y'all gotta look at your work order list, I mean, some of y'all got fifty and stuff, and it's just cause.
Oh, y'all got something back in first of June.
We just stopped and did road maintenance, I mean, at some point, we had to stop and do that, and.
Yeah, I got the solution, just take that stuff offline, they can't see it.
Who, y'all?
Yeah.
Jay never misses.
Absolutely not.
But I mean, you know, and what I've, what I've done, I've kind of took one of the in-house of what I've got, with what the equipment I've got, I've kind of made up a three-man crew, and it, it'll work, you know, I mean, when you're sending three guys out there to fix Pegasus driveway, or do a little stuff we see on the work orders, instead of five men out there to do it, I mean, you're saving money, and we can keep them five men on road maintenance, but.
Well, I'll tell you.
We got so far behind on the road maintenance too, I mean, cause I did no road maintenance last year, besides just, I mean, our road maintenance has been work order, that's what we've done.
Right.
I mean, right now, we'd take, if I shut down everything else, it'd take us a month just to clear up these work orders we've got in hand right now. If I can do it in a month.
Yeah, if you didn't have any more coming on.
Yeah, but that, I promise you, after this rain today, I just got a bunch.
I got one, I got one to tell you what size culvert needs to be, contact me, I'll tell you what size culvert needs to be there.
But, uh.
Yeah.
And that's where I'll come up with the three-man crew.
Too small, tell them to see me.
To put in areas to try to take care of some of these workloads, so we can work on some road maintenance, cause I think if we ever go to the road maintenance, I, I thought at one time we'd correct the work orders, but I don't know that we'll do that, or, cause too many people done got used to the work order system, that they can call up here and say, I got limbs that need to pick up, and I mean, it's where they clip their rose bushes and put it out there by the street, or, you know, my ditch is holding water, yes, ma'am, I understand, but, you know, you live in a sloop, swamp down here, and it's always gonna hold water.
Yeah, it's flat.
Well, it's held water for thirty years, I mean, you're not gonna drain it unless you get to digging the whole ditch out, you know, still gotta go do something to satisfy it.
Reservoir up, it ain't gonna drain.
On it, so. I'm, whatever y'all want to do.
I'd say take the five hundred thousand, I mean, uh, and work with five, uh, million, the three and the two, if we can do that.
We're still gonna be over the, out of cash.
I know, I mean, I, I understand.
We're gonna be the two million over in cash, right?
You're talking about doing, you're talking about reoccurring expenses out of cash?
Yep, yep, and I, I don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm like these guys, it's not something we can plan on and do every year, uh. Dang it, like to catch up, I mean, I, I'll tell you, there's potholes.
There's not many that you can.
Past about four, and I don't wanna call Mike and tell him about them, nobody has called me, right, so I don't wanna call Mike and tell him.
Cause he got plenty to do.
Because I've already given so much, I mean, and everybody else has things.
And I ain't saying we ain't got them out there, because, I mean, well, I know we do, I know we do.
My name on it is because they've called me.
Yeah.
And I do the same thing, not saying I don't leave it alone.
I have a question for you.
Till we get caught up.
I keep hearing that, I don't know if we'll ever get caught up.
Three hundred thousand based on mills, are they entitled to that millage per se? Or is it a set dollar amount that makes me?
They have nine mills.
I, I think.
That's based on their, well, you know, we took in, was it, we took in, they increased their area, so therefore they're collecting, the collection has been on that expansion they did, so that's basically.
Well, we did say the clearing will show up, not next year, but next year.
So just out of curiosity, I saw Rankin first, we have allocated, that's, is that by statute or is that by our decisions?
That's by our.
The board in ninety-two said that's our, our.
No, they have millage now.
And then we took it off, and then we put it back on.
Yeah.
That had more on, that had on, we took it off for a couple of years, but no, um, Rankin first, yeah, it's point four-seven, point four-seven, something like that, yeah. Um, but we had it on, we had one point something on years ago, we took it off, we funded them out in general, maybe two years, and then we added the millage back on, not nearly as much, but it is a, an, a millage that they get out of.
Yeah, same for the library.
A lot of that protection districts had to vote for that millage increase, specifically for the fire protection side of it, so.
Yes, we have seven districts that, um, have millage on, seven fire districts have millage on.
And I think it's been a while since they voted to increase that fire protection millage out there.
It's been a few years, it's been several years, but you know, they had the increase in their district.
Yeah, it's been a lot of years, before I was supervising.
Say millage rate for properties being assessed.
Being assessed and added, that's how the number went up this year.
That's right.
The number went up this year based on the, Mr. Sullivan's word.
I, I'm assuming you're taking advantage of opportunities like Rankin first, if they only need three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to operate off of a year, but the millage, based on assess valuation continues, you're making that, uh, we adjust that, or you make that adjustment, or the referees make that adjustment, lower the, not the two then.
Come on, buddy.
We can, yes, they, we have not done that in the past, but we can, it is, it's a risk, we can.
I see several, I see several, several line items, but they give you more money, I don't like really paying attention to much, but I'll get it because the assess value is going up, and the millage is staying sane.
Same, it's, right, well, and they still money collects it there over what they requested, they're the only person that can get it out of that levy now.
I'm not gonna build any.
In the case of Conover, we took a small portion off and put it over onto our debt service.
Hey, Daniel, he's trying to say that deal was off for you today.
What was that?
And he's acting like it don't help him.
Bishop is all, it's a poker game.
Yeah, I, yeah, I get that.
It's the greatest super bowl district to serve and supervise rent.
Let them take.
Are you jealous, is that it?
Yes, I am, I would say it now.
All right, hey, are you gonna meet with Greg when he stays with me?
What's collected over what they requesting.
I'm, I'm planning on, I mean, I hadn't heard, hadn't been invited, I guess it's my fault.
I'm asking, do you want to?
All right, well, thank you, Mike, and, uh.
Steve doesn't decide how much you're getting, so.
Y'all figured it out, Donna?
Steve already told him, told Laura. Yeah, yeah.
Bridge fund, right below.
That does give us her balance, though.
The, the bridge fund, um, currently has about eleven, twelve million.
We got, we have a bridge crew, right? Don't we need two?
That's what I was trying to create, another bridge.
Oh, man, killing me over here, man.
Three years, the balance is going down.
Yeah, right.
Um, in fifteen, we had almost fourteen million, uh, thirteen, eight, eighty-seven, then it went down to a little, just barely over twelve, then it went down to eleven and a half, and the bridge is.
We keep nicking away at it.
Well, we had our star bridge, that was one point two, we gave two hundred and twenty-five thousand to, was it Southwest Rankin, the City of Pearl, just Southwest Rankin, that was back two years ago, and then we've got the five hundred thousand coming out.
Oh, you're talking about the, okay, the two point four million, two point five million, not two hundred thousand?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, the two, yes.
Two and a half million.
Yeah, two and a half, yeah.
And then the star bridge, and then five hundred's going to Brandon this year, and that's coming for their bar.
Yeah, we can, we can put that five hundred back in there. Now, I, uh, I don't know of any other big projects we have coming down, I'm sure there'll be somebody coming hitting us up.
A portion of all the crews are paid out of bridge and some out of road, and so, right now, we're gonna pay Brandon their five hundred this year, with the new leases that have come on, we're still taking, we're gonna be taking about seven hundred thousand from cash.
Okay, but that's not reoccurring, that's just a.
I don't have any project, that's just with leases and.
What about, um.
But we'll pay additional.
That three hundred thousand that we're taking for employees and whatnot, why can't that come out of bridge?
Well, they're already paying a portion.
Can they not pay a little more of a portion?
Well, we could do fifty-fifty, but your bridge fund is gonna, this, keep going down.
Then it would be a reoccurring.
Okay, well, I mean.
I mean, either way, it's gonna be reoccurring.
The, the deal is though, y'all, we don't, we don't have as much of a demand on bridge.
We're already, we're already getting it.
We don't have as much of demand on bridge, do we?
I know, unless you have another star or.
I'm sure we will, but I mean, how much you say, they've got eleven million in there? And we're going in cash a little bit this year because of some leases?
Leases and anything else that's, that due to the increase in personnel a little bit and.
Annual lead, how much do we have coming in there?
Uh, coming in?
I, I forgot the number.
Well, I can tell you just a second here, Jay, about.
Uh, thirty million, five hundred.
And.
So what is, what is, what is more important, maintenance or overlay?
They're the same, aren't they?
Well, that, that is the same, that's what, when he's saying maintenance, he is talking about overlay or chip seal.
Well, you got to do, you got to do maintenance, I mean, the whole, whole objective of this thing, Mr. Bob, and I mean, it's hard doing a lot of our roads, is to keep the water away from the road, I mean, if you keep the water draining good and the water away from the road, it makes your asphalt last longer.
So is maintenance overlay, or is it, are you categorizing two different things? Or is maintenance overlay the same thing?
Two different.
Two different.
Oh, I was thinking, when you were talking about maintenance, I was.
Yeah, I, I thought overlay was maintenance, but.
Well, chip seal, y'all may consider chip seal is.
I was thinking they were separate, okay.
That, that's my point, you know, we're gonna spend X dollars, what's more important to this board, is it maintenance or is it overlay, and it may be, we have to cut back on overlay budget to, to make sure we get the maintenance stuff, that we get good maintenance, and in theory, we're getting extended life of overlay, right?
Hmm, kinda.
But I think, I think you're.
But I think, I mean, and, and I mean. But I, but I think, I mean, and, and I mean.
If you're caught, if you're caught up on overlay.
We'll never get caught up on overlay. We've got like fifty million to do that, so, we know that.
No, I mean, I looked, I looked the other day, I mean, you know, I, I could spend the money just, just like that right there. I mean.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I should like my budget, I can spend it quick.
That's why.
You know, I mean, because we have that many roads impacted right now, that, that, uh, well, I mean, you take, and, I mean, I just throw it up. I mean, we got a road over there, whenever the houses get built and stuff, we probably weren't gonna overlay that. Next year, I was really looking at it for the next year, but we'll have to do something there, you know, on where it's gotten tore up, so, you know.
Bob didn't, Bob didn't mind doing it. Bob didn't mind doing it. Bob didn't mind doing it.
But, I mean, I mean, it's, and, I mean, I'm looking at a lot of roads that's fixing to come due, and it's gonna happen pretty quick, you know. I mean, it don't take but a year or two, once this asphalt starts dying, that's when it comes apart. The grayer it starts looking, and, I mean, it's, that's when you start, it starts coming apart, and that's where you gotta come in with this micro. I think we can take the micro, that's what I was saying with this study, and get out here and get us a study on these roads, and I think we can take this micro and we can save our, we can make our money go a lot fuller.
Boy, I think we need to try it first before we get too deep into it.
I, I agree with you.
I, I got a good friend in the highway department, and I won't say who he is, I won't put him on the spot, but he's not really sold on, he's one of the engineers, he's not really sold on micro in this area, you know.
In what area? In this area?
Well, you got, you got to put it in the right dirt.
Uh, you know, put him on the spot.
I think in your, I think in.
I'm like Jay, I think we start off, and I'm sure you are, small C, you know, uh.
Think in your neighborhoods, you're gonna see it be ideal, where you, where you just have.
Little in and out roads.
Right.
I mean, if you can ever get a, I mean, right now, we, I mean, I did one in your area, did one another day in Jared's area, you know, North Star Road. When they're overlaid roads, we chip seal them and try to get five or six more years out of them.
And you want some, you'll give more.
I reckon when I look at it, I'm looking, I'm scratching my head, I'm saying, okay, there's five houses on four miles of road right there, and I can go over here and overlay a bunch more, you know.
Mostly the four houses.
I mean, that's what we all.
Ten votes, uh, I probably wouldn't get but half of them, that's not a lot of them.
But, I mean.
There's twelve houses on one mile of road that I live on, and it's, it's the way it is.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, we're trying to do stuff like that to save the road, you know, to get us further down the road on it. And that's where I'm saying you can come back with that micro and go back over that kind of stuff, but.
See, when you have gravel roads, micro, micro, RACO, whatever you can put on it.
Or chip seal. Laura, what do you need from us?
To know if you want me to bring this budget back into line without any coming out of cash, which would mean probably eliminating the three-man crew, which would eliminate the crew cab truck, which would eliminate a piece of equipment that he said that they'd have to have. Might not get it all one hundred percent, but it would make the biggest dent.
Can we, can we get, put the manpower in there and not the equipment? Because it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, I can put the manpower in there.
Just not gonna put you a free person up to different spots, so.
But what equipment would you need? A mini and a truck and a bug pool trailer like we're doing right now?
Basically, the equipment to go along with it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You'd have to be some, but what equipment would you need?
I mean, you're talking about about a hundred thousand dollar worth of equipment.
But here's the thing, though, too, y'all, if we do this, are we gonna fire them or let them go later?
Why, why you saying that?
Say, the right, this county's growing, I don't think that's gonna be.
I'm gonna see it ever needing that.
Well, I mean.
I said, when I was elected, we needed another crew.
But what we're talking about, though, is taking money out of cash to pay for them.
You don't have it.
And either that, at some point, you either fire or you raise the village to pay for it.
Right, so, yeah.
Maybe some of these new houses will start paying taxes.
And I think, and I think you've got time to rob from Peter to pay Paul, but at some point, some board is gonna get stuck, and they all gonna look at, well, we all be a contributing factor to it, well, we just want board, you know, but, yeah. It's kinda where we are, really, you know, I mean, it's just kinda.
It's a necessary evil in a way.
It is. I mean, we just got a.
Well, and, and all, honestly, we keep getting some of these, uh, unfunded mandates sent down. That fall here, and we gotta keep up, we gotta keep up, where they're balancing their budget, it looks good, but it's just sweeping down here on us and the cities and everything else. Boy, just like the cities, the, what, the, what we're cutting from them, Ritz and getting six hundred thousand dollars cut from their budget.
Oh, speaking of that.
Three hundred, huh? No, you said six hundred.
It's between four, it's, it's gonna be around four something.
Have you got that letter out yet?
Well, that's not, yeah.
Does it identify how much each city's getting out? We need to do that, because when I told the mayor, Pearl, last week, he was like, well, how much is it? And I was like, hmm, I'm sure we'll tell you. So, we do need to tell them.
The one is Ritz and knows.
We did do that?
No, we can only give.
Visitation.
Well, I think we need, because they're doing their budget just like us, so.
Right, that's what we said the other day, there, they need to know. Yeah, right. Yeah, I know, he talked to me in a funeral home.
Do it and pay for it later.
I'm on, I'm on the fence. I'd hate to go that way.
On what?
Do for it and pay it later, but gosh dang, we need a crew.
Well, I don't wanna weigh in too much, because y'all be, you ain't in the road, so.
We're talking, we're talking about pulling.
I'm in favor, I, I'll go ahead and start the ball rolling here. I'm in favor of giving it to this three-man crew. We go ahead and rob Peter for Paul, and at some point down the road, we're gonna have to pay the fiddler, and we just have to figure out, take a day in on the chance.
I guess my thing is, is there, is there any other area we can, we can make the cut on?
That's what I was just asking earlier, and she's like, no, it's not.
Stand alone, see it's a standalone fund.
Yeah, and inside each one of them, inside the budget, you know, we got mostly heavy equipment and stuff.
It's its own separate fund, has its own millage associated with it.
Us conservatives up here.
What?
Us conservatives up here.
Right.
Well, like conservatives, though, we also have a lot we've created.
Well, you know, that's something else, too. If we do this, y'all, that just means more supplies we're gonna need too, because that's more work they're gonna be able to get done properly. Mike, you thinking about that, Mike?
What?
If we add another crew, then most likely, that's gonna be more supplies that we need, because they're gonna be doing that much more work.
That is.
So.
Yeah, but Jay, we got, who's gonna, we gotta do the work. I mean, we're caught in a rock and hard place here.
But, I mean, I, I mean, Laura, tell you, I mean, we've sat down and, me and her have been struggling to get just through this year right here.
And we're already.
And, I mean, it's been, it's been a rainy year, and, I mean, we're struggling to get through this year right now because of, uh.
Well, I think we gonna need to slow down.
We've just done, done that much work.
Because we're already over the additional monies, three hundred thousand, on top of what the, that we've already added in, so.
How, all right, where do we slow down? That, and I understand what you're saying. But that's kinda like, we were gonna do, we were gonna raise millage, and people kept saying, oh, no, just do some cuts. Where you gonna cut? There was nothing to cut.
No, I'm saying, don't add on, don't add the other crew.
Well.
I mean, we have got to this point, I mean, and I think Mike has done an excellent job, the crew has stepped up and doing an excellent job, and we do get quality work, and, and Steve, you're right. People, our expectation level is raised out there in the area because they see what's being done, that we are in a fairly attentive to what they need, and it does require more, they do want more as a result of it. But we still are meeting the demand, so maybe we'll wait a year and kinda see where the money, if the money doesn't improve a little bit better before we, you know, bite off on a three-man crew.
We can always hope that the revenues turn out better, that we do get more, more millage in than what we think, and that can happen, they, I have to base it on what they've given me, but they might come back at the end of next month, and it might be up a little. While the budget's set, but we're gonna get more at Malora then, and there might be something else, we might do better at auction when we sell some of our vehicles with what we get, so we can always hope that.
Why don't we do, why don't we do this?
Revenue will.
Well, we can always, you could always amend the budget if we needed to, if we saw we needed it, we had to have it, we could amend the budget for the crew later. If we had to put that on, as, as far as your, if the millage changed, I mean, we could always come back and add it and amend it to pay for them.
Add it at any time that y'all's call.
We've been doing it right now.
You said it was a rainy year this year, and you've already done enough work this year to supersede the two and a half million we put in, plus another half million dollars, and that's on a rainy year.
Craig, take, take a second and go over your part one more time. Can you say, you got a second? Where are you going? I got a few questions for Slay, I wanted to ask you for a second, so.
Oh, what I got left over here, Slay?
Yeah, bring it up on Slay's part. Slay, what do you think? What's your thought?
But, I, yeah, Jay, I mean, I mean, like last year, I mean, I know I was kinda late coming in the budget, but I really didn't have to worry about money, I'm, I mean, I've been watching like a person watching a checkbook for the last four months, you know.
Well, I think you have done an exceptional job for us, and I think our guys did more work done than we've ever done, and that's the problem.
Well, I'm asking a lot out of them.
So, we're just churning out more work.
But there again, we don't wanna work them down to where they can't keep up either, so, I mean.
Well, when would you hire this new?
It would be a process, Miss Laura, because I'd be particular about how I would, you know, I mean, I gotta find those people, because I buy the road, the road department within it. I don't have a lot of people that I can promote left on it, so I'd have to probably look at outside people on it, but you don't ever know when that opportunity walks in the door. I mean, I hired two last week that I would've never thought walked in the door, you know, but they did.
You pushed your hires over into early eighteen?
Yeah.
You talking about.
We only have six months to pay them.
You're, you're safe and a little bit, you know.
That's what I'm saying, we can push it over into January, I think we just.
I think that'd be a good, uh.
You see, your capital, capital.
Two weeks, two, come in next week. Yeah, and, and plan to start them.
I mean, like.
I mean, if you started the process in January, it may be March before you have.
Oh, yes.
And you're not gonna do a whole lot in January, February, anyway.
You're wanting to watch it from the springtime, right?
Right, you want them.
I mean, you, I'd like to have it in, if I was gonna put it in place, I'd like to have it in place by.
Slay, what do you think?
February.
Defer everything to Jessica now?
About Valentine Day, everybody gonna crack off after that, but.
Just right. Monday, five-thirty. There you go. Don't let her fool you now, she's, she's gonna work on trying to get that date, that, uh, that time.
But, I mean, if, if we had the money, it'd be nice to go ahead, and I might be able to go and squeak the mini in this year, you know, just to clean up a few things on it. I mean, I'm making, me and Miss Laura.
You get your minis on a buyback?
No, sir, we just buy them outright. Only thing I do on the buyback is like our large equipment, our dump truck, I mean, we just, our big ticket items is what I've been trying to do. Minis will cost us about forty-eight, five, something like that. You know, pickup, we get under state contract, uh, trailer gonna cost us about forty, eight hundred dollars to pull it around with, so. So, that's about what we're looking at right there. If we, we may be able to, I know we're getting close, uh, but we may be able to squeak a little of that in, clean up a little bit what we got right now, just to help out the next year.
Well, let me, on Reno, say it.
What we gonna be on drainage, Jack?
Yeah, we, we ain't even started that yet.
What, um.
Yes.
You know, you're talking about buying that piece of equipment outright, you know, there are situations, occasions where they're, you and I both know that we buy, both buy, we bought used equipment. Very good used equipment, you don't even consider it, but you get a very good price on it. Is that a consideration for, for a mini? I mean, if we were having to buy one outright, I didn't know if it compares.
I would, that's gonna be a, Miss Laura and Ricky question, I'm thinking. I mean, I know Simpson County buys used equipment, so I know we can, so we buy used equipment.
Yeah, you can buy used equipment, and if it's gonna be over your, um.
Bid amount.
Won't you get to buy like used equipment?
But, I mean, how do they go to the auction and buy it? Because you, there's no way to get a, no, no way to get them. Only reason I know this, because, I mean, Jay, you know Randy, I mean, I know Simpson County's gone and bought pickups and dump trucks over there at Dinko, some of our trucks.
Carl, Carl would have his curse around that issue, dog.
I don't know how Richard, Richard.
Tap dance around somehow, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna find out, I'm gonna find out.
I mean, I just know, but, I mean, he goes up every letter credit type deal, and, I mean, I agree with you, Jared, I mean, you ain't gotta be a brand like a new one.
I mean, I don't, I don't mean one that's got all his hours, you know what I'm talking, me and you.
That's fine, but, I mean, you go through the rental fleet, a lot of these things are in the rental fleet.
There you go. Really, turn them out and they just, they, man, I'm probably.
I mean, I got ten or twelve thousand dollars right off the top of, you know, I don't have no problem with that.
That's not a good idea.
All right, so maybe we can research some of this, make that final decision coming up next week, because that's when you gotta have it all set, right? We gotta make that decision by Monday or so. All right, thanks, Mike, very much.
One question, while y'all are all here.
Yes, sir.
Work, give me some direction.
Craig's not here.
Call him back, Laura. Call Craig, get him back over here.
Oh, me and Laura's talked about it, I went and met with the folks, give y'all an update on the recycling people. Uh, went and looked at their Hines' operation.
That's the crew that came in and presented it to us, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, gonna come do the cardboard boxes, plastic, different things like that. They've looked at our facility, like it, but, I mean, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to bu- build a shed or something for them to put their equipment in. I mean, this equipment, you can't have it out in the rain, you can't have this corner.
It don't rain here.
It don't rain here. I mean, when they do that cardboard box pressed together, it can't get wet, you know, so, I mean, we got this big old slab down there, but, I mean, this building's gonna, just kinda looking for some ideas, and Sheriff may, it's kinda his, but, I mean, it's kinda been, I've been wanting to have to do research, so I just see what y'all wanna do.
Tell me, is, uh, a guy from this county has the roll-off dumpsters that he's, you know, talked about, but I think he told me that he also.
Deep South.
I think he also handles the cardboard recycling.
Okay.
Can we check with him and, I mean, I'd just give him a shot, if any, is it his business, and they are in this county.
I guess that was, that was Thursday, I'm guessing, y'all went over that?
No, this was several months ago, and I just, while I had y'all here, I mean, I wanted to take two minutes of y'all's time and.
I don't remember.
Give us a little direction on it. There was one of them deals, wasn't there, like an eighty-twenty with the sheriff or something? Give some money back to the sheriff's department, because it'll be all inmate run and everything, so. But, yeah, I, I don't know, do we got a contract on our dump, on our roll-off, or?
They're, they're in Westman.
Okay, but we do have a contract.
And speaking of that, you know they're putting that other one at the south side at the school. Yeah, I think they've got that worked out. David's supposed to call you this week, so, that's one we've been going on for a while, we had in the discussion, so that third one, the third recycling one. Yeah, I've got a spot there at the school, they're gonna put it back there. The schools are doing massive recycling issues, so, it's coming, just so you'll hear it from them, so. All right, just need to figure out how we're gonna pay for that shed, then.
Shed cheap, shed cheap, we, we're for the shed, I, thank y'all.
All right, anything else? All good? Yes, sir?
No, good, it's fine.
All right, recess until the, uh, fourteenth, right?
Hey, are you already sent us the numbers out to them on the previous tax?
Yeah, I'll get with Craig and we can, we can send them out.
Or just tell me so I can relay it on, if we've already sent the letters, so we can just.
I think we, we, I think we did, we said we're gonna send them immediately.
Yeah, he's already sent them, so we, yeah, we can just get an idea.
All right, do you intend a motion for recess to the fourteenth at five-thirty?
So, over.
Mr. Bishop's motion with the second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? I don't know if they ever say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you need these back, Laura?
Recessed until the fourteenth.
I'm gonna leave mine here.